All this regular meeting of the city council to order. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, roll call. Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Penduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Councilmember Vacaro?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertani?
Here.
And Mayor Moy?
Here.
Thank you.
And our invocation tonight will be worship Pastor Anne Choi of Community United Methodist Church.
Good evening. I've served here for four years and I will be retiring at the end of this month. So it has been a privilege to be here in the wonderful city of Fairfield and all the the community that is built here together. So it's my privilege to offer prayer this evening. A spout together for a word of prayer. And I'm sure it's been a long day, so let's just take a deep breath in. And breathe out. Oh God of all creation, we thank you, Lord, for this day. You are the giver of good gifts, providing resource that all may share in your goodness. You are with us in every situation and season, including this one. Oh Lord, we gather tonight out of love for the city and community of Fairfield. Bless our city's leaders and equip them as they offer themselves in service to this community. Walk with our first responders and all who live and work here. Bless all who gather this night with hopes and concerns for life together. Unite our hearts and minds with clarity and humility and a common purpose. Oh God, pour out your spirit to anoint and to guide. Open our eyes and hearts to see those different from us as brothers and sisters. Deserving of respect and honor that we might be more aware of the ways that we get in the way of this holy future. Help us to hear, to listen deeply, to care thoughtfully for all peoples with respect. Be with all who are struggling and we thank you that you are ever near to the brokenhearted. May our hearts, our intent, and our actions grow to reflect your grace and truth, your love and forgiveness, your mercy for all in need, pointing to a vision of life for us all together. Lead us with courage to do all the good that we can, oh God, the source and giver of life. Show us your wisdom and love as we humbly do the work of building each other up and making decisions for the well-being of all in this community. I pray in the name of Jesus, God with us. Amen.
Pastor Choi, could you stay right there? I have something, we have something for you. So you, Pastor Choi, you've been a faithful servant, not only to your own flock, but to the city. Many of us were there last night when your church and the fine folks there put together a beautiful concert and also a beautiful Afrocentric meal so we could celebrate Juneteenth together. And it was amazing. I know everybody's going to want to come next year because it was so fabulous. But, and also I need to say that our late mayor, Harry T. Price, was one of your greeters and was there forever and also very faithful to your church. And we thank you for the time that you spent with Harry. And he loved you and loved all of you so much. So I wanted to give you this certificate of appreciation. It's just in honor of your unwavering service at Community United Methodist Church and your dedication to the community. So I'll give that to you. And also, this is the first one I've ever done. This is something that Mayor Price used to always tell me how, how special this was. It was something that the mayor did and it is a key to our city.
Wow.
That's my first one. Thank you very much. Do you want to say another word?
Just thank you very much and God bless you all.
Yeah. Want to take a picture of us? Okay. Should we come this way? All right, we can do that. Thank you, thank you Pastor Choi. God bless you. And this is the keep it is. Thank you. All right. So, Madam Vice Mayor, could you lead us in the pledge?
It would be my great honor. Please stand before this flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to go to council reports and I guess we'll start with you, Councilman Carr.
Yeah, I can keep it pretty short, Mayor, thank you. It was my honor to attend the groundbreaking out at our Pacific Flyby on this last past weekend. We're out there with Senator Dodd and the congressman. It was really nice. It's going to be such a good project when it gets going and it's, it's really going to be another gem in, for Fairfield. For those of you that don't know, it's, it's, they're going to have a welcome center at one time. They're starting to break ground, I think, in 10 days, right in there. There's going to be nature walks out there and it's on Gold Hill, right off of 680. It's going to be a really nice project. Also, I went downtown and attended and walked through the, our first big Juneteenth celebration down there and it was really nice. A lot of good vendors. I imagine a lot of you guys were there, I hope. It was, it was really nice. And that's all I got for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, that's plenty. I know you've been busier than that, but we'll let you slide. Okay, Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll keep it brief as well. I also attended the Pacific Flyway event and it really is, like Councilman Carr just said, a really tremendous project, a long time coming. And the thing I love about it the most, I think, is that it will be a destination. It will be a destination in Fairfield. People will wake up all over the Bay Area and the world and say, we want to go to Fairfield, California, because we've got to go to the Pacific Flyway and see all of the nature and the bird and the migratory patterns. And so it's just fantastic. A lot of work is going on into that and I just thank the city. Some comments were made at the event thanking the city and all of the staff for all of the help that the city has provided on that project. And so just really looking forward to that. And, excuse me. And then just a word on Juneteenth. You know, I'm going to present the proclamation shortly, but you know, you really can't say Juneteenth as a national holiday in the United States without mentioning Ms. Opal Lee. Ms. Opal Lee is the grandmother of Juneteenth. And back in 2016, or godmother of Juneteenth, I think, but back in 2016, Ms. Opal Lee, in her 90s, started working to make Juneteenth a national holiday. And what she did was she walked two and a half miles in different locations and neighborhoods all over the United States of America. And that two and a half years was to commemorate the two and a half years that it took for the Emancipation Proclamation and the Declaration of Freedom from slavery to be enforced in the state of Texas after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation in 1863. Now, you know, Juneteenth is about unity and it's about freedom and quite frankly, it's also about oppression. And if we're honest, we know that we stand in an America today that still struggles with oppression, you know, against all people and people of color. But what, what I thank God about today is that we are in America, which means we are Americans, which mean we can still make a difference, like Ms. Opal Lee in her 90s. This woman is walking neighborhoods. And so in 2021, President Joe, after Ms. Opal Lee delivered a petition of 1.5 million signatures that she got signed on her petition, delivered it to Congress, in 2021, President Biden signed legislation commemorating Juneteenth as a national holiday. So I know we've got some students out there in the, in the crowd. I don't know if you knew about Ms. Opal Lee, but she's a pretty cool lady and she stands for the proposition that we still, even with our struggles, we still live in the greatest country on planet Earth. So happy Juneteenth, everyone. That's my report, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Penduro?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to share some events that are coming up. Tomorrow at noon, the North Texas Business Street Association is having a homeless business watch. And so that is when all the businesses from North Texas can come and learn about, and have their questions answered around the topic of homelessness. We'll have our hit team there, so you can join via Zoom or you can come to the chamber, which is located on 1111 Webster Street, and that meeting is being held at noon. The other thing, look forward to more information, but I am planning a cleanup on July 15th for District Five, along with the North Texas Business Street Association, and I'm hoping to also partner with Republic Services to have some big dump, big dumpsters out there for residents to come and dump large items. So more information to come on that. And then a big shout out and thank you to Parks and Rec over, they do, they do some great job over at the adult rec center. They have some great activities for our older friends and we attended the Time and Music and Time Show and Luncheon a couple of weeks ago. And even Councilmember Tonison joined in the fun and he was a dance partner for some of our new friends. So we had a really nice time. It was the music club that performed, they danced, they sang. They're just such a phenomenal group of people. They're so talented and it's just great to have a space where they can go and show their talent to the community. And so they have other events going on and I encourage my, my colleagues to come and join us. It's really fun. We get to sit and have lunch with them and make new friends and it's just a really nice, a really nice hour to spend with our, some other members of our community. And if you want to find more information, you visit our Parks and Rec website or Facebook and they have all the events listed there. Also, I just wanted to shout out an event coming up on Saturday, this 24th, Safe Quest Solano. So they are a domestic violence organization, so they assist and give resources to domestic violence victims. So they're having a fundraiser on Saturday. It's a fashion show. Yours truly might be one of the models. And I see some models also in the audience. Other electeds and other community leaders are going to be showing off some awesome fashion from the, from the local community. So come out and support. Look them up online or their website. I think tickets are like $45. So it's a great cause. It should be a great time. And then you get to see us walk down, walk, walk down that runway. So that is all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Vacaro?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, it's, it's great to see the, the chambers packed. That just means people care. When the chamber is empty, that means people don't care or maybe there's nothing that they really want to talk about. So obviously there's people here that do care and want to talk, which is always great. I'm just going to follow up just saying, I also attended the Pacific Flyway and the Juneteenth celebration. Two great events, you know, in our city and like everyone mentioned before me that, you know, at the Pacific Flyway, I think myself and I know the mayor, I'm not sure, maybe Councilman Bertani also was here at the inception of that. And that was something we've been following for quite a few years. So finally, there's been a groundbreaking. And of course, just the Juneteenth celebration. I mean, that's something that has been a long time coming in our country and should have always been here from the beginning, but as Vice Mayor Bertani said, sorry, I think I said Councilman, Vice Mayor Bertani said, you know, oppression is still among us, it's still here. Is it ever going to go away? I don't know, but at least you can keep fighting. So I think that's, that's a good sign. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Tonison?
Well, everything was covered, so nothing from me tonight, Mayor.
And Councilwoman Williams?
I, you know, I did cross out a lot of things that were on my report. We, we attended a lot of the same events together over the last week or two. So one is Juneteenth at the U.S. Air Force, at the Travis Air Force Base. So I was able to deliver a second keynote speech. I don't know, I'm getting better at these. And it was wonderful to be out there with our servicemen and women and celebrate Juneteenth was pretty a high mark of my last few weeks. Also, just a, the Solano County Fairgrounds had their opening day. I know quite a few of us were out there for that and that was pretty wonderful. And just a beautiful shout out to our dads and grads. We are all going to graduations and, and such. And that is wonderful to, to highlight everyone that is graduating from everything from, seems to be. that is graduating from everything from, seems to be, middle school on up. And also, a special shout out to Jacob Francisco. He graduated from UC Davis, if his name rings a bell, it's because he is everywhere, and he is one of our former youth commissioners. Really, really great guy, but thank you. But to the other graduates, just congratulations. And finally, just want to uplift our dads. There are father figures, there are just men that love their family around us. And even if you aren't a dad, you're doing dad-like duties, and I just want to lift you and to thank you. And that's my report.
That was beautiful, Councilwoman. Thank you. And I would just like to say that they've covered about everything. I just wanted to point out that at the groundbreaking out at the Flyway Center, what's so important about this whole thing is that the voters of Fairfield decided on this. They decided that they wanted us to include that in Fairfield, deliver water there and sewer and everything else, and be part of it. So, this is really your celebration. I think it was something like 76% or so, it was way up there, the vote for yes on this. And it is going to be a great place of education for our children. It's being built so buses can come in and come out, so a lot of schoolchildren will be there and get to see things that probably many of us haven't seen before. Our marsh is unique in the world, actually, and we are going to be on the world stage here. The people who designed this and started off looking at it, they have done other things, like the Monterey Bay Aquarium. And so, we expect some really good stuff here. It's going to take some time. We're building new marshlands, so instead of taking some away, we're building more. And so, there's a lot that goes into that. But I also want to say just personally, it was my first golden shovel. So, I'm going to be putting it up on my wall. Everybody signed it, and it's hilarious. I came in carrying it into my house, and I said, "Look what I got." And he's like, "We have like five or six of those on. It's okay." I said, "Not like this one. It's golden." So, it was really neat. And then I just wanted to point out to folks who've been waiting out in the Cordelia area, tonight on our agenda, we are okaying, probably, the widening of Red Top Road, and that will be done by the end of this year, it's supposed to be. So, the builders out there have gone through the process and gotten the permits, and tonight we are going to vote on okaying that. So, I'm really happy about that, and I know Councilwoman Williams is too, right?
Yeah, but I don't, are you supposed to tell people that we're going to vote? We got to decide.
No, no, no. It's on, it's not on us. We're not going to discuss it unless you want to pull it.
I think we're going to.
Oh, good. Well, then we are going to discuss it tonight, and we don't know if we're going to vote for it or not, but if there's many Cordelia people out there, I think maybe, you know, I mean, anyway. So, there you go. And that's all I have. How about you, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've just got two items. We are having technical difficulties, so we had a piece of hardware go out. So, right now, not that anybody that normally watches there can see it, but we are not able to broadcast on Channel 26 tonight, so we'll be getting that fixed. But we are on YouTube at youtube.com/FFCATV, as well as the Zoom link, so anybody can watch it there. And then the second thing is, I just want to recognize Savita Chodary. And so, in this past week, made the decision to promote Savita to our Assistant City Manager slash IT Director, so she'll continue to have day-to-day operations responsibilities for the IT Department, but I can now put a lot more work on her. And so, as you know, in the past about a year and a half now, since I originally had stepped in as interim city manager, we've not had that position filled. So, I'm really looking forward to having Savita helping out in the city manager's office, and that concludes my report.
Savita, would you stand up? So, we're going to.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a quick follow-up?
Of course.
Mr. City Manager, are we recording this meeting so that whenever the software, whatever the hardware problem is, comes back up, this meeting can play on Channel 26?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, do you have a report tonight?
I have nothing to report.
All right. How about you, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let people know, we still have openings on our new landscape oversight committee. It's going to be one person from each district and then one at-large member. So, so far, we've gotten four applicants from District 1, zero from District 2, four from District 3, three from District 4, zero from District 5, and one from District 6. So, they have extended the deadline to July 14th, so hopefully, some of you will decide to put in your application. You can, if you have any questions about it, just email cityclerk@fairfield.ca.gov. And then, we have two openings for the Rockville Hills Regional Park Citizen Committee. We have not received any applications yet, and that deadline is also going to be Friday, July 14th. And again, you can email cityclerk@fairfield.ca.gov for more info. And then, last but not least, our youth commission, we still do have two seats available. That's a term from, it's already, the term started in January, but it runs through December 31st of 2024, and applicants must be residents of Fairfield and between the ages of 13 and 21. So, hopefully, some people will hear this and decide to put their hats in the ring. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, we'll now turn to the presentations, if you would please, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Presentation one, recognition of the 2023 Water Awareness Video Contest First Place Winner, and our presenter is Nigel Brown, Public Works Senior Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So, my name is Nigel Brown, City Senior Management Analyst in the Public Works Water Utility Division, and I support our water conservation efforts in the city of Fairfield. And as part of that, the city partners with the Solano County Water Agency to promote water conservation in Fairfield and also throughout the county. So, one of the big efforts that we've collaborated on is that the Water Agency will hold an annual water awareness video contest. And in that contest, participating students and their supporting teachers develop creative and informative videos demonstrating water-saving strategies and wise water use. This year's theme was Saving Water is Saving Our Future. We had 109 videos submitted countywide, so that was a huge number of videos, and those videos are submitted from our middle and high school students in Solano County. And just so you're aware, the selections of those videos, as they were rated, were based on entertainment value, originality, videography, style and organization, sound, content and accuracy in information, and they had to do all of that in a one-minute video. So, tall order. So, with that, what I would like to do before I proceed is to show you the first-place video to give us a little bit of context.
Crazy. Hundreds of gallons of water have gone missing from my house in the last day alone. I need to investigate this case. I think I've got it. Turning off faucets while you brush saves about four gallons of water. Repairing leaky hoses can save over 500 gallons of water a year. And by watering your plants later in the day, you can prevent evaporation and save even more water. They didn't solve all my water usage, but it saved more water than some people get in months. Case closed.
So good.
So, our first-place winner is here, and that's Saachi Bonsall. Could it come up? So, I had the pleasure of presenting the first-place award to Saachi in front of her peers at Rodriguez High School, so that was a nice treat. But we also thought it would be good to recognize Saachi in this forum as part of the larger Fairfield community. So, and then with that, Saachi also wanted to say a few words about her experience in the process, so I'm going to turn the mic over to her.
Thank you. Thank you to the city council and to Mr. Brown for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. Honestly, I think most of the work for this video went into just thinking of the concept. I wanted something that was unique, and I'd like to think I pulled that off, because we've all seen that same cookie cutter, you know, campaign video a million times. But honestly, I think the biggest takeaway from the entire experience was a shift in perspective, because, sorry, you look at awareness videos a lot differently when you're the one making them, because there's only so many ways you can say the same thing. So, just changing your lifestyle can make a big difference. We've all heard it a million times, but it's true. And yeah, thank you.
Also, I'd like to make one more comment. We weren't sure if she was going to be able to be here tonight, but I mentioned the supporting teachers in the process. And Lynn Larson is Saachi's supporting teacher for this project, so I'd like to give her a round of applause as well. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, Saachi, that was really, really good. I mean, I can't, I can't, well, anyway, never mind. But it was very good. I'll tell you, in the 70s, when we had a shortage of water, we put bricks in our toilet to bring up the water level, so, you know, yeah. And then, some other things that we did also as well with the toilet, but that was one of the things that we did back then for water saving. I didn't see that in your video, but I'm glad we've gotten past that. Yeah, 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 very good. But that was excellent. Does anybody else want to say something to Saachi?
Just that it was very clever.
Job well done, even down to the music.
Yes.
I mean, I kind of wanted it to go on, to be quite honest. So, you know, maybe you'll have a version 2.0 and come back and give us some more great information. Job well done, Miss Teacher, job well done. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Am I screwed on?
Oh, yeah. Why don't you come here in the well, and we'll all stand up?
Yeah, let me cover myself. Yeah.
Madam Clerk, the second presentation?
Yes. Fairfield Police Department's recognition of Kimberly Foo for 24 years of service to our community by our police chief, Dan Marshall.
All right. Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to recognize Kim Foo. Obviously, she's a friend to many of us, but since she's put many of us on the front page of the Backville Reporter, I'm going to have her come stand front stage while we talk about her.
Come on down, Kimberly.
So, I just wanted to just do an appreciation for Kim. Kim has been great to the police department and also to the Fairfield community. Kim has always understood the importance of positive messaging. So many times nowadays, we just don't see that in reporting. In the era of social media, it's so quick to throw out something that's not accurate, and Kim's always been an honest reporter. So, those of you that don't know, Kim is no longer with the Backville Reporter. She's now working for Congressman Mike Thompson's office, and so, we will miss her. We'll miss her in Fairfield for sure. She has definitely been a community partner in getting our message out, not just the message that social media wants to put out. So, thank you, Kim. So, we just want to give you a plaque and appreciation for 24 years of partnership in building community trust and engagement in our community. Thank you.
A cute picture. Thank you, Kim. Yeah, thank you very much, and I'm sorry that you've left journalism, but you never do. I just want you to know that, that you, you know, I enjoyed working with you when I was up at the Reporter for a while, and you are an honest reporter and a very good reporter. I say that as a former editor. I thank you, Kim, for everything you did. God bless you.
And our third presentation, proclamation declaring Juneteenth National Independence Day, presented by Vice Mayor Pam Bertoni to President of Solano Black Chamber of Commerce, Temory Richardson.
Solano County Black Chamber of Commerce, President Temory Richardson, come on down. Any other chamber members, come on down. Fairfield can, come on down. I just am so proud of this collaboration and partnership. This is the second annual Juneteenth Festival in Fairfield, and if you were at the first one and at the second one, what did you notice? It grew exponentially, right? And so, we really want to thank all of the support and help that we had, the chamber, in one word, I would say amazing. We have a great partnership with the Clergy Action Network. Some of our members are here, and of course, the city of Fairfield has been a strategic and wonderful partner in making this event what it has become. And thank you, Councilwoman Pandora, for reminding me to remind everyone that the Juneteenth flag is now raised in the city of Fairfield for the remainder of the month, along with the pride flag. So, I am a proud person to be standing here representing this city in support of such a historically important event. So, with that, I will, I will present this proclamation to Temory Richardson, whereas June 19th, known as Juneteenth, and officially named Juneteenth National Independence Day is also known as Freedom Day and Emancipation Day, and is a federal holiday in the United States commemorating the anniversary of the abolition of slavery in Texas on June 19th, 1865. And whereas Juneteenth's commemoration is on the anniversary date of the June 19th, 1865, announcement of General Order Number Three by Union Army General Gordon Granger, proclaiming freedom for enslaved people in Texas, which was the last state of the Confederacy with institutional slavery. And whereas the day was recognized as a federal holiday on June 17th, 2021, when President Joseph R. Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act into law, becoming the first. becoming the first new federal holiday since Martin Luther King Jr. Day was adopted in 1983. And whereas celebrations date back to 1866, at first involving church-centered gatherings in Texas, spreading across the South and becoming more commercialized in the 1920s and 1930s, often centering on a food festival. And whereas the civil rights movement during the 1960s, these celebrations, the Juneteenth celebrations, were eclipsed by the nonviolent determination to achieve civil rights, but grew in popularity again in the 1970s with a focus on African-American freedom and arts. And whereas, beginning with Texas by proclamation in 1938 and by legislation in 1979, every U.S. state and the District of Columbia have formally recognized the holiday in various ways. And whereas celebratory traditions often include public readings of the Emancipation Proclamation, singing traditional songs such as Swing Low, Sweet Chariot, and Lift Every Voice and Sing, and the readings of work by noted African-American writers such as Ralph Ellison, Amaya Angelou. And whereas Juneteenth celebrations also include rodeos, street fairs, cookouts, family reunions, park parties, historical reenactments, and Miss Juneteenth contests, now therefore Mayor Catherine T. Moy, Mayor of the, Catherine Moy, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, hereby proclaims June 19th, 2023, as Juneteenth National Independence Day in the city of Fairfield, and urges citizens to educate themselves about the historic significance of this day and to embrace the city's ethnic and cultural diversity. So happy Juneteenth, everyone.
Temory, would you like to say a few words, please?
Sure. Thank you. The first, I think I would be remiss if I did not thank our mayor Moy, the city of Fairfield in its entirety, city manager David Gassaway, and of course, city council, our Public Works Department that really, really supported us in tremendous ways, Parks and Rec that assisted in making it happen. None of this can be done without a collective, and so partnerships are essential. And I can't imagine a better partner than the city of Fairfield. You embraced it, and you enabled us to be able to make this really the event that it is, that it was. Our second year, we wanted to do something a little bit bigger for a lot of different reasons. One, the first one was so successful. But Juneteenth means a lot of things to a lot of people. And I was looking on the news the other day, and a gentleman said that Juneteenth is not supposed to be a celebratory event. It should be a somber event. And that is not how we're looking at it. Anytime anyone is freed and shackles are removed and their new birth into life, then that's something we have to celebrate. And we didn't just celebrate it from a black perspective. We celebrated it from every perspective. So if you got the benefit of being able to be out at the Juneteenth in Fairfield, you saw folks from every walks of life, folks from Rio Vista that came, from Dixon that brought their families, because they didn't know anything about it, but they wanted to learn more about it. And they got an opportunity to see that it is an American event. We had Tyler Bertoni sung the National Negro Anthem, and we had Joshua James sing the Star Spangled Banner, because one does not outdo the other, but we can celebrate both of them collectively, and they did an amazing job at that. So this absolutely was a wonderful event, and we wanted to have it with community in mind. Most importantly, if you get nothing from any of this, we were able to support 300 vendors of multicultural backgrounds by, as a collective, paying for permits, licenses, and not charging vendor fees. Imagine being a small business and not knowing if you are going to be able to, in fact, generate revenue that day or that you were going to be able to make up the vendor fees. And it was important that this was done with deliberate messaging. And being a chamber, commerce is, in fact, the key. So we did more than just celebrate and party, and I got a wrap around my foot because we did a lot. But we wanted to make sure that everyone benefited and that you could see it as a collective. So if you didn't get a chance to come to this year's Juneteenth, you definitely have to be at next year's Juneteenth, because it is a community affair, not a black affair. So I again want to thank the city of Fairfield. You guys are, listen, you've outdone yourselves in your support of the Solano County Black Chamber and the community in its entirety. So thank you so much.
Are we missing a proclamation today? Is there another one? No, this is.
I think we have multiple, right? Yeah, we should, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I didn't see that.
Oh, it's okay.
There they are, back there, yeah.
These right here.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so nothing is done on an island. And in order for us to really be able to turn this Juneteenth celebration as we did, we had an amazing committee. It was a lot to do. I could not have done it alone. And we planned it flawlessly. We worked very much so together. And again, everything was with the intent of community. So I'd like to hand out proclamations to my committee. I think a few people are not here tonight, so we'll keep them, and then we'll give them to them when we see them. So Lisa Crawford. Pastor John Reed. Jessica Reed. And I think Tanya Vincent, I think, is not here, and Renee Trotter with Logic Ministry. So we'll make sure that they get them. One of the, probably outside of the committee, a special proclamation. We received so much feedback about the Fairfield Police Department. And why that's so important, it's so important because we know that a lot of the black community is going to show up, and the Black Chamber is a huge supporter of Fairfield Police Department and law enforcement in general. And we think it's a part of what our mission is, to be able to bring community together. And so we're very proud of that. The Fairfield Police Department shows up, they support. But the comments that were mentioned to us was how friendly, how kind they were, how personable they were. They were hugging, smiling. For some people who are not accustomed to seeing that, and we had folks from the Bay Area, Sacramento, we had local folks, that was astonishing to them. So out of the many things that I thought was wonderful about the event that we'll take from us is that our wonderful relationship that we have with the Fairfield Police Department transferred over to our, our people in the community that were there and felt really empowered and embraced that. So I'd like to also give a proclamation to the Fairfield Police Department, Chief Dan Marshall. And I think that's it. Thank you, everyone, and for everyone that's supported us, keep supporting. Thank you very much.
Alrighty, we're now going to turn to public comments. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. If you're online to speak on an agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. Thank you. And our first speaker. Oh, I'm sorry. The first speaker I have is Jeff Traeger. This is for public comment?
Here he is.
Come on, Jeff. Okay, Mrs. Mayor, members of city council, this is what's going on at the Downtown Theater. The Putnam County Spelling Bee is coming back, their 25th anniversary. And that's on the 7th of July. And this Friday, we have At Ridgeway Park. We have Papa Joe and the New Deal. And a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Scott here come down to, we had Hey Jude, which Beatles tribute band. And I thank you very much. I hope to see you out there. We can have a big, big crowd. And I would like to give a shout out to the park rec department, because they always, you show up and that place is always clean. And it really makes a difference. So thank you very much. I'm trying to think what else. Oh, Juneteenth Festival. What a day. But it was great to see all those people there. It was, it was wonderful. And I, the bands, I hope everybody liked the bands. Anyway, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Alicia Minion.
Hi, my name's Alicia Minion. I'm actually a resident of Vacaville. And I'm very civically engaged, and sometimes I'll choose to research something, and it'll make its way into your territory. So there's a couple of things that I looked at that I wanted to make you aware, and I'm hoping that you can direct staff to look into it further, because maybe there could be some policy and procedure improvements on two areas. So number one, I researched Jepson Parkway, and I specifically looked at the section of Jepson's Parkway where it was widened by the Peabody-Vandon Road. So basically, that facilitated the construction of the train station and the One Lake development. That roadway required environmental mitigation. And typically, the way a developer would mitigate it, they would, one way is to buy mitigation credits from a conservation land bank. Fairfield chose two conservation land banks to buy credits from. One was Muzzy Ranch, one was Noonan Ranch. And upon further research, both of those conservation land banks are owned by the developer of One Lake. So, so it, my, my one concern was potentially a conflict of interest. Number two, the other concern is I didn't see any evidence that these agreements for the mitigation credits were approved by council. Maybe they were, I don't know. And I'm going to give you a copy of the agreements. But the one concern I had is instead of Fairfield actually buying the credits and paying cash, you cut a deal where you gave Cannon Station, the developer, one of the developers of One Lake, you gave him a $3 million discount on development impact fees, specifically a $3 million discount on traffic impact fees. Traffic impact fees could be used to make improvements to roads, which I'm sure the city needs, and that's on the agenda tonight, could have been for that particular road. But again, the other thing I didn't see is on your annual development impact fee report, I didn't see the $3 million credit, this discount referenced. I didn't see it on your city's financial audit report. So you might have, you should talk to your independent auditors, where maybe you have a gap issue in terms of having disclosed this $3 million credit. And I think I have all of them, all of those issues. But, and so I'm going to submit this into the record. And then one other issue, so again, along Vandon Road where it was widened, one of the lots is a.
15 seconds, Alicia.
15 seconds?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's Travis Unified actually sold their continuation school site at a deal, so Fairfield could expand that road and facilitate One Lake. The acquisition of the school site by Fairfield, I have the deed, but I discovered that that was not, that acquisition was not authorized by council. And it was not, that land was, acquisition was not accounted for by your accounting finance department. And so maybe there's a policy issue. I would hope that if you acquire land, you would authorize it, want to know. So I'll give these records to the clerk.
Thank you, Alicia. And we will look at those, and I will speak with the city manager about those things, and also our city attorney and our finance director to see what we've done with that. And if it's something that we need to talk about here as far as policy, we'll bring it back, I'll bring it back to this council.
Great, that way my research doesn't go to waste. And it's all about improving process transparency and accounting for things appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Okay, our next speaker is Sherwin Harris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the city council. My name's Sherwin Harris. I've been a Fairfield resident for 23 years, and I live over Orchid Street. My quality of life has deteriorated because of neighbors and people along the streets feeding peacocks. Those peacocks, they just go up and down the street, eating vegetation, eating your grass, any flowers that you plant, they're destroyed. They fly a short distance, but they fly and get on your roof. They eat your shingles. They peck on your cars when they see they're, they're a reflection of their, of themselves. They start pecking on your cars. And then they poop everywhere. And that poop does not come out. My neighbors laugh at me because every evening when I drive home, first thing I do is inspect my driveway. And then if it's poop, I have to scrub it up. But then it doesn't always come out. I wanted to know, is there ordinance or is there a law against residents feeding peacocks and trying to basically make them pets? Because over the last four years, flocks have just grown. I just found out yesterday, there's a peacock sanctuary across the, across the freeway. But I, I'm not by a sanctuary. I'm just in a residential place, and would love to find out what are my options besides just moving.
Sir, city manager, do you, do you know if we have any ordinance about feeding wildlife?
I don't know about any ordinance specific to feeding wildlife, but at your request from a prior meeting, we're bringing a conversation on 7/18 council meeting, July, talking about the efforts that have taken place. So, you know, and I'm not, I think you said Orchid Lane?
Orchid Street.
Orchid Street, okay. And is that in Rolling Hills?
No, right off North Texas.
It's on this side of the freeway.
Okay.
So opposite, totally opposite. I don't know how they got across two freeways going, going north and south.
Yeah, got you. Yeah, because in, in the Rolling Hills neighborhood, you know, there's a concentration of peacocks. And at the Danelle Center, we do feed them there in order to try to keep them from, you know, migrating out into the neighborhood. And this year, we've trapped and relocated 13, I think, 20-plus peacocks from that neighborhood. And so we'll be bringing back some conversation for the city council to potentially provide policy direction.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I live in the Rolling Hills neighborhood, and where the Donnell Park is the sanctuary for the, for the peacocks, and the neighbors in that neighborhood actually asked me to have this, this, this council discuss an ordinance to, you know, we want, we want to feed the, we want to feed the P file, but we need to feed them where they live, which is why they have that sanctuary there in, in Rolling Hills. And so, a lot of the neighbors in my neighborhood have been doing the same thing, I'm sure out of love, but training the birds to not eat where they belong and to come to residential areas to get food. And so, we will be entertaining that. It's a problem in our neighborhood as well, the same kind of damage and everything, so we hear you and we're on it.
Yeah, but how do you domesticate a wild animal?
We, we don't. We, we have a sanctuary for them, is my understanding, and that's where the birds belong. So, we'll, we'll, we'll be looking at an ordinance to, you know, discourage folks from feeding them at home because they're just, they're, they're birds, they're going to go where the food is. So, if you're giving them food and letting them sleep in the truck and all that stuff, then that's where they're going to be. So, we need to make sure that they are where they belong, which is at that sanctuary.
But can you honestly say they just stay in their sanctuary? Because those things fly everywhere, they, they walk everywhere, they, they're crowing and making those noises all in the middle of the night, and-
Yep. I know, I, I hear them as well. So, I'm just saying, the issue is going to be before the city council for us to figure it out.
And what day was that, the 17th?
July 18th.
July 18th, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next speakers are Sachi, who won our videography award, and Lilly. There's a third.
Hi, we're, okay, we're here as part of the Fairfield Youth Air Protectors with Sustainable Solano. Our goal is to spread awareness and build community around air quality issues in our city to promote the transformation of Fairfield into being more environmentally sustainable and people-oriented.
Hello. We've come to promote the Air Quality Community Roundtable event. We are having this Thursday, June 22nd, at the Fairfield Adult Recreation Center. The roundtable will last from 6:00 PM to 7:30, and will be a community-led conversation about residents' experiences with poor air quality, asthma, and other related illnesses, and the walkability of our city. These conversations will help form the foundation of an air quality community action plan that will be drafted by community members in the winter of this year.
We have flyers with registration and event information for the roundtable if any council members and community members are interested. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. You can give some to the clerk and also out on the tables, out in the anteroom, that would be great, and I appreciate so much you taking this on. It's a huge issue. We love you, young leaders.
Thank you.
Yes.
There weren't enough for all of us, but I can make copies and email them to you tomorrow, council.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Rochelle.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Please forgive me for coming up early. Different cities have different protocols. Some have cards, some do not, so I apologize for that. I was sent this email and asked to bring this to the council tonight. Apparently, Dover Avenue and East Tabor intersection, there was some concrete work that was done at the four corners of that intersection, and the west side corners were done first, but apparently, there was something that went wrong because they were formed six to nine inches lower than the asphalt level. So, when the concrete was poured, it became a tripping hazard between the street and the sidewalk, and it stayed like that for about a month while school was in session. And then, it appeared that there was a fix that was attempted. They did the two corners on the east side, and those came out fine, but now, the problem got pushed out into the intersection. So, where it was previously a pedestrian trip hazard, now, apparently, whatever fix was attempted, it has now pushed that problem out into the intersection, and so, it's a hazard to vehicles. So, someone would like to, public works, look into that. We'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, we will, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, did anyone else want to speak on public comment? I, the rest of my speakers are for item 18, and there are no hands raised online at the moment.
All right, and then, we'll go ahead and turn to the Joint City Council and Housing Authority. Madam Secretary, if you would, please.
Yes, let me just note the time. Thank you. The holding of a joint meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint meeting. And I believe I need to take role?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Panduro?
Here.
Commissioner Tonison?
Here.
Commissioner VaCaro?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Vice Chair Bertoni?
Here.
And Chair Moy?
Here.
Thank you. And item four, Joint Public Hearing of the City Council of the City of Fairfield and Housing Authority Adopting Resolutions 2023-149 through 2023-154 and HA 2023-04 Approving the Fiscal Year 2023 to '24 and 2024 to '25 Budget and Financial Plan. And our presenter is John Furtado, our Director of Finance.
Good evening, Chair and Mayor Moy, Vice Mayor, members of the council and also board members, since it's a joint session. Before I kick in, you know, I would like to thank our city manager for his guidance and countless number of hours he dedicated to us, also to the city council for engaging through the study sessions and providing us with the required direction. My fellow directors and their staff, we really made them work hard this time with the budget, so it was a process. And of course, my finance team, who worked countless number of hours, Ashley here and So, tonight, we are going to discuss our two-year operating budget. We'll touch upon the general fund and our 10-year forecast. We'll also look at a couple of our other funds, our highlights on the capital budget, and the GAN limit and a few resolutions. So, the internal process we had during the budget development was pretty long. We started way back in December, and you see, we, we went through this at the study session. Just on April or May 23rd, we had the study session with council, got direction, and between May 24th and June 7th, we finalized the operating capital budgets, that's before you today. In terms of council engagement, I think this was the most we've engaged council. On March 14th, we came to you with a study session on reserve policies, received your direction. On April 11th, we presented the capital budget and the plan overview, and then, on May 23rd, we gave you the first look of FY '22, '24, and '25 proposed operating budget and 10-year forecast, received your direction, and here we are today to adopt and discuss. So, just touching, as a recap, at the study session, since we were looking at a budget deficit or structural deficit, we asked for council's direction. We presented three possibilities where we would do a balanced budget using austerity measures, which would mean significant cut to services. We also presented a hybrid model where we would balance using one-time balancing strategies with funds that we had set aside, and also, at the same time, focus on how we can generate more revenue, and then, how we can reduce some more of our expenses. And we also presented a scenario where we just look at getting more revenue from increasing fees or, you know, a big bond measure. So, council authorized us to do a hybrid model, and that's what you would see in today's budget presentation. So, the key issue that we hear internally as well as from council was what changed, right? So, when we computed this budget, we looked at all our revenue sources, expense sources. Touching on the revenues, we are projecting less than a 1% growth in revenue in the first year, and approximately 2% in the second year. And key of, key drivers there, sales tax, that's a big one for us, it's over 40% of our budget. We had a bumper year last year where we went up by 15%, mainly driven by auto sales inflation, but we're seeing a cool-off, we're seeing consumer spending decline, so we are almost flat in the first year, showing less than a 3% growth in the second. The other big driver is property taxes. The 5.2 increase that we're projecting reflects the new development as well as the increase in the price, in the median price in the first year. But then, as home sales have slowed, we're showing a 2% growth in the second year, and between 3% to 5% in the 10-year forecast. The cannabis tax, here's one example where we were projecting to have a million dollars initially when we did our last budget, and then, we've looked at it statewide, we're seeing a decline in cannabis sales, they haven't been at the levels that we expected, so we brought that down to 750, and then, we are growing from there by 3%. License fees and others, we did a few adjustments here, some of our fire reimbursable revenues for the strike team, we won't be sending out a strike team, so we won't have those revenues, but part of this is also going to be covered by the new Cordelia Fire revenue that we will receive, which will increase these numbers. Looking on the expense side, as you see, we were showing less than a 1% growth in revenue, but we are showing a 10% growth in expenditure in the first year, and around a 6% in the second. Again, primarily, a, a big driver is our staff costs. These are through negotiated MOUs that run up to 2025, and I'll get into the details of how those have moved. And another big one is the internal service charges, around $6 million increase there, and I'll get into a detailed slide on that as well. While our discretionary expenses, one-time capital expenses that we use in our operating budget, we've stripped those from the next two years, so we have got a million dollars in savings there. So, when you look at our net, in FY '23, when we adopted our mid-cycle last year, we were projecting around a 1.6 million use of reserve already. When we add the impacts of '24 and '25, those numbers jumped to 13 and almost 20 million. So, we went back and did a full recap with our team. We managed to get in budget reductions of around 850 in the first year, and we got balancing measures, so we used around $28 million of other monies we had set aside to balance our first year, and we would use reserves of 4.33 in the second year. However, one thing to note is that we'll be going back, turning every stone and looking at what we can do, and come back at the mid-cycle update and hopefully eliminate even that So, here's part of the reason of what, what changed, how did our numbers move. Our normal cost went up by a million and a half, that is what we pay CalPERS. Part of it is driven by negotiated increases in pay as well as the additional staff we brought on, and CalPERS does this analysis at 2.8%, so our growth in payroll was higher than that, so that's almost one and a half million towards normal cost, and then, another $400,000 towards the unfunded liability because CalPERS did not meet the gain that they were expected to. And those two numbers would flip in the second year where our normal cost goes up by close to half a million, and the unfunded liability goes up by 1.4 million because last year, CalPERS had a 6.8 or 6% negative return, 6.1% negative return. So, a 12% swing means it would affect us in the future, and that's what's prized into here. 2.7 million in the first year is from our negotiated MOU increases and step increases in the first year. That number jumps to 4.9 million in the second year. And the other numbers that you see here, I'll go back to workers' compensation, we did not budget for that in the past, but we've eliminated the fund balances available, so we need to set money aside for that, and compensated absences for our leave cash-outs. As your pay increases, the number, the sheer dollar value also increases. And then, on the internal service charges, the big ones that increased was as we increased our fleet, added more vehicles, the cost of maintenance of those vehicles has gone up significantly, so we needed to set aside another one and a half million dollars for that. On our IT side, mainly related to radios and cybersecurity, those costs are going up by the number that you see there, 3.7 million almost, and that constitutes the five or six million or so that's increasing on the internal service charges. So, how does that translate into our 10-year forecast? When, when we look at our 10-year forecast, after balancing measures, we are able to preserve our reserves at the 20% required level for the first three years of this budget, but then, we start to taper off and go into negative equity. However, the key thing to note here is this is as, as an ongoing as-is scenario, if we had to continue as we are. But that's not the intention. The intention is that after this budget is adopted, we're going to go back to the drawing board, look at how we can bring in more revenue, try to reduce the expenses, and come back at mid-cycle with a revised update in the next six months or so. So, looking at our total budget, this is across all funds, we've got the first year, which is $381 million as a total budget, and that's net of transfers. Of that 381 million, 36% of that amount is from the general fund, 25% of that goes towards the CIP. If you had to eliminate capital and just go on operations, around 48 to 50% of our budget on the operating side is the general fund in the first year.
Hey, John, real quick, I guess there's, on our online broadcast, the slides are zoomed in funny, so Bill's going to fix that real quick. I'm going to start from that slide. Oh, they can see it, it was zoomed in, so good. Oh, I can't see it.
around 38%. Breaking down the general fund expenses by department, as you can see, public safety accounts for around 67 or one-third of, or two-thirds of our total general fund, and close to 90 million or so- close to 90 million or so in expenditure, if you take it in dollars. And this is on the '24 year. Similarly, in the next year, the second year, our budget jumps to 148 billion with public safety still at two-thirds. And then the general fund expenses by category, so 137 million is our total general fund expenditure. 72% of that is related to staff costs as well as the staff internal service charges like our repayment of our pension obligation bonds or our workers' compensation set-asides, et cetera. Look at the revenue side, again, 41% of our revenues come from Measure P or sales tax. Another 22% of that is from property taxes, and then if you include all kinds of taxes, 83% of our budget comes from taxes or over $113 million. Similarly, in the second year, we jumped to 144 million, and that's primarily because of some of the balancing measures that we used on the transfers in. And again, taxes is the big one, 80%, plus of our budget comes in from our taxes. I'll touch upon a little bit on our non-general fund funds, our transit, golf course, water utility, and housing funds. Some of the highlights in this budget cycle, we are adding six positions while also converting one limited-duration position. Five of the positions that we are adding are in the water funds, so no impact on the general fund. The two positions that we are adding in IT related to cybersecurity in our munis financial system are 89% general fund funded. So just looking at staff growth over the last 10 years since 2013, and these are still numbers, the final number of 619 is still below the pre-crisis where we were on 650. A significant amount of staff was added between 2020 and 2022, as you see on this graph. A few highlights on the other funds, on our transit funds, we are introducing microtransit, which is kind of operations like LOFT where users can actually call in in advance and schedule a ride to wherever they need to be. The advantage of this is that it eliminates us using bigger buses and to pick them up and drop them. It's more cost economical. In the transit, we also completed last year the transition of the Solano Express, which we lost, the routes that we lost. And then we are looking at a fair increase of 25 cents that was approved in 2022 on our routes, as well as a 50 cent increase on the Dart Route that goes up in July 1, I believe. On the golf funds, the bonds that were issued for the golf course will be paid off in July of 2023. That should free up around 480,000. However, we've got extensive deferred maintenance at these courses that we had not done in the past. So like, we've got a roof to replace, we've got irrigation systems that need to be changed, so for some time in the next couple of years, whatever we save from the bonds will go towards addressing those needs. One unknown that we have on the golf fund and that will come back on the mid-cycle is the current management contract expires in December. We are currently in the final stages of identifying a new provider, so we will crunch how those numbers look like and bring that into a revised forecast. Looking at our water utility fund, the last approved water rate increase was in January of 2021, so we've had two years of no increases. Last week, at the study session, you had a preview of the Water Master Plan. That's going to be in full swing along with the rate study that is currently underway, and those will come to you separately with proposed new Prop 218 rates. On the housing side, we're concentrating a lot on revenue generation, which includes inclusionary housing and a few other measures that housing is working on to increase the revenue side of things because they need to get to support a lot of the expenditures. And also reducing barriers to housing is another thing that we are trying to accomplish. Details, more details can be provided by Lieutenant. And then also preserving and increasing the production of stock, you know, new developer agreements and other kind of things that we can do on the housing side. We also going to receive for the Housing Trust Fund, $1 million in a state grant. And on the Housing Authority, we got a $2 million, we will receive $2 million from our former redevelopment agency. There's a $10 million loan that's coming back to the city that 20% needs to go towards housing, so they will receive around $2 million for that. Going on to the capital improvement plan, we provide a five-year capital project plan. So the five-year plan is around $390.4 million over the next 2023 to 2028. 120 million of that is towards buildings, and close to 100 million is in our water funds besides the others that you see there, buildings too. And I'll touch upon a few of the projects that we are recommending or going to highlight Looking at it on a two-year basis, so while we provide a five-year plan, we adopt a two-year budget for the capital projects. So the first year of the capital project is going to need 95.7 million, and the second year would be 93.7 million, which is set aside for council to consider. Some of the projects that we have on the capital improvement side, the Linear Park, that's one of the projects that's around 16 million, and... I had my notes here, but I can't see them. So it's going to have new playgrounds, I believe. Christina, do you have more details on that one?
So there's something about the 2020, 2021, there was a...
Yeah, we can't, we can't hear you, Christina. I can, I can step in here. So the Linear Park Node 4A, that's inclusive of the Linear Park improvements, but then that's also in that dollar amounts, 2030 North Texas, the new park and First Five Community Center that'll be going in. Allen Witt Phase 3, let's go back one, John. Allen Witt Phase 3, that's the adaptive playground that'll be going in at Allen Witt Park as a part of the, I think, seven or eight phases in the Allen Witt Master Plan. The West Texas Relief Sewer Project, that's improving the sewer main and adding a relief along West Texas. That's basically Phase 1 of the Texas Complete Streets projects. Phase 2 will be water improvements, and then Phase 3 will be the Complete Streets project. And then the Travis Safe Routes to School project, that's actually a collaboration with Solano Transportation Authority, and that'll be a Class 1, so a totally separated pedestrian and bike pathway that'll go from the south portal of the Fairfield Vacaville train station down into the main gate of Travis Air Force Base. So it'll be a great multimodal interconnection there.
And with the West Texas Relief, we are going to use 3.1 million of ARPA funds on the Travis Safe Route to Schools, that's mostly grant-funded, along with other projects. They all have a certain amount of grant funding as well. And then looking at the fire stations, we've got Fire Station 36, which is being built. It's a new fire station on the Business Center Drive. This one is going to service the Cordelia and Green Valley area as well as others, and it's going out to bid in the fall of this year for construction. Fire Station 39, that's on Peabody, we've acquired the land, we've got the designs ready. It's also going out for bid in the fall so that we can have economies of scale by projecting both these together as one project. One thing to note also is that this is going to be fully funded by the CFD, or at least 12 million of it is going to be funded by, 11.5 million by the CFD. Then the other big project that is on the building side is the Police Edition. We've got a land adjacent to the police station with the growing population. That building was built in the 70s. It needs to be expanded just by sheer population growth, staff growth. The plan is to have a 13,000-square-foot single-story building attached to the current police headquarters. And one of the smaller projects is the Central Utility Plant. That plant was, I believe, commissioned in 1969, before I was born, and it's really in dire need of support. It supports the council chambers, the fire station, City Hall, the community center, so a lot of upgrades are needed to keep it up to standard. And then finally, looking at also before you is to adopt the GAN limit. The GAN limit is, for those who don't know, is a limit that was set by law by Prop 4 in which the limit of how much a city could raise in taxes was capped at the 1979 levels and increased by growth in population as well as growth in income. So there are two factors. So when we compute how much we are at, we are at a third of what we could raise. So our GAN limit is $309 million, but we are only at 107 in spending, so there's a lot of room there if the need arises. A lot of cities don't have that, they are very tight. Even the state has had to refund once in the last 20 years or so. So the recommended actions today are to adopt the resolutions before you. I'm not going to read all of them, but I'll move straight into any questions you may have.
And real quick, before we get to questions, I'll just summarize. You know, we're hitting a little bit of financial difficulty as an organization, and I think that's evidenced by the, by the numbers. I'm incredibly appreciative to John and his team in this last year, particularly over the last nine months or so, they have put in a ton of effort. Not only have we sort of revamped the way in which we're looking at budgeting and the way we're going to go about doing this from here forward, but the complexity layered on top of that was as we went into our new financial system. So when John arrived last year, not only were we in the middle of a transition to a new financial system, but then we were kicking off a budget with some massive changes. And so, you know, over this next year, we are really going to be honing in on where are those areas, based on council's direction from your study session a few weeks back, where can we shave on costs and where are there opportunities for us to identify potential new revenues? And we're looking at every option. And, you know, I want to say that it's going to be some challenge, and at your mid-cycle budget update, we intend to have a little bit more of a comprehensive, in-depth process, typically in the middle of the two-year budget cycle. It's a pretty vanilla mid-cycle update. We just really update on what's changed this time around at your mid-cycle. It's going to be quite a bit more comprehensive as we're going through all of the options. And so over the next six to eight months, as staff from across this organization is really diving into all those opportunities to find efficiencies, to look for potential revenues, or to identify anywheres, anywhere where we think we can shave on costs, we are going to be doing that. We're going to leave no stone unturned, and it is going to be a major work effort. And I'm already, I'm thankful for this organization and our senior leadership team, as we've been discussing this in the past couple of months, the effort that's going to go into it. I just want to thank them all in advance for the work that they and all of our employees will be doing here over the next six to, six to eight months as we really identify ways in which we can close this structural deficit. Because at, you know, a projection of 20 million, it's going to be a real challenge for us to do, but we're committed to responding to this challenge.
All right, colleagues, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Would you like to hear from anybody first before you ask questions? Yes? Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers on the side of Madam Clerk?
I do not. Did anyone want to speak on Item 4?
Hi, Alicia Minion, I just had a quick question, and I might have missed it on one of your slides, but where does it show, you know, on the capital improvements, where does it show the restricted and unrestricted fund balance for capital improvements? And how much of that is committed?
So when you see a capital project budget for $390 million here, that's all that's committed towards the CIP.
Okay. Yeah, but you mentioned that it was, like, a lot of the parks and the fire stations, they're funded with malaroos, so it's really the property owners that are funding it through property tax. So what, in terms of, so you have that road that says streets? So how much do you have in unspent, non-committed funds for capital improvements, whether it be a building, a road, a street? So where does that live? Because I'm just seeing, you know, I see the big number, 390 million, but obviously you can't afford that, and that's over, I just see through 2028. So, yeah, so typically, like, on a governmental accounting perspective, you have these buckets, and some buckets are unrestricted, some buckets are restricted. So the bucket for capital improvements, so that's infrastructure, roads, buildings. I'm not understanding in the slide what is sitting in capital. And then you also have capital improvement funds sitting kind of under development impact fees. So I see, like, projects, and it's just, it's hard to put the numbers together and see what's funded through the general fund, what's funded through, and specifically these restricted and unrestricted buckets for capital improvements. So it would be nice to see what is available for spending. And by the way, something could be committed, okay? So the city could say, well, I want to use this restricted fund or unrestricted fund for X, and you could always change your mind. As long as it hasn't, like, work hasn't started, you can change your mind. So that's, if you can kind of give us some numbers about, about money available for capital improvements where the work has not started.
So if you see how we present, we have the operating side and we have the fund level. So there are different funding sources, developer impact fees, gas tax, all these are funding sources that we receive money on. Those funding sources is what funds the CIP. So there are two separate documents. If you look into our operating document, you'll see the different type of funds that we have. And in those funds, it will show what the current fund balance is, how much is committed towards transfers for the CIP, and what the balance is. So ideally, when we prepare a capital improvement program for over the five years, we commit almost 80, 90% of what we have. But the details can be available, Ashley would be glad to show them to you if you'd like.
Hey, are there any other speakers?
Any other speakers?
Can you fill out a card when you're done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I did. I apologize.
Oh, for Number 4?
Oh, no, Number 18, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. This is Number 4.
Is it okay that I speak for this too? Ask a question? Am I allowed to do that?
We're still on Item 4 right now, so when we get to Item 8...
And ask a question about this? Okay.
Okay. About budget.
I noticed in your presentation that you guys have 8.2 million towards the Travis Safe School Route, and you described that as being a bike path walkway from the train station to Forbes Gate. Is that, was that correct?
Right up to the gate, yeah.
I was just wondering how that's being described as a safe school route when nobody lives at the train station. How are the students or people that you're expecting to use that as a safe school route supposed to get there? supposed to get there to use that path when there's no sidewalks on Peabody?
That is, it's referred to in that manner because those are a majority of the funds that we received for grant funds through the Salona Transportation Authority in order to fund that project.
But that's not a safe, that's not a safe school route. What, who, if a safe school route is for children, how are children using that?
Here's our Public Works Director.
Hi there, Paul Koshel, Public Works Director. Yeah, it's a combination of safe routes to school and transit because the pathway, the image that they brought up earlier on the earlier slide, it actually connects and passes by the schools there. So it'll pass right next to Vanden High School, I believe, along, I think it's a Durande, that's the street that goes in front of there. So one of the ideas and one of the things we're really excited about with that project, so it's, we received two grants totaling $6 million, which allows us to move forward with the construction of the project. So it's in planning and design right now. It will allow us to open up the south portal of the train station, and then so we would be able to have either people hop off from transit to go from transit to the base, main gate, but then also potentially walk or bike from, you know, the train station, go through the south portal, and then bike or walk to the schools in that neighborhood there.
Any other cards to speak, Madam Clerk?
No other cards, and there are no hands raised online.
All right. Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And any questions, colleagues? Yes, Councilman Tonason?
You know, I, and we've all seen this presentation. We were at our retreat, we've gone over all this information before, but I didn't ask a question at the retreat. Did we anticipate on the cannabis? Were we estimating four shops or...
Yes, four shops with them being fully functional is what we are projecting.
When the showcase comes in, which is going to happen soon...
Correct.
We should see a little bump in revenue there.
Which would be up to the $750,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First, can I tell you, John, these presentation slides are so good. They're crisp. I have kind of visual issues, and now I can see them, and so thank you. And they have page numbers. That makes me really happy. So page number 10, and if you answered this during study session, I just don't remember. So the year, '24 to '25, there is a bump up in revenue to 144.3 million, and then back down in '25, '26, 136 million. What is, what is causing that, that huge revenue bump?
Excellent question. Our city manager asked me that same question, so I'm well-prepared for that one. So in '22, '23, '24, and '24, '25, we are using one-time balancing measures. So we are moving money from other funds. So we've got, especially in '24 and '25, we're bringing in money from IGS Fund, which is going to receive the $8 million from the repayment of the RDA loan. That 8 million is going to be a transfer in. So all transfers that come into the general fund also get clubbed as revenue. But if you strip out the revenue, and we can provide you, in the budget documents, we actually have revenues without the transfers, which would look pretty smooth in the growth factor that we have applied. But that's excellent question.
Thank you. So the rest of the questions, actually, City Manager, you answered in your summation right after John finished his. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carr?
If we go ahead and approve this budget, you said that we're going to have a six-month update. Is that six-month update going to be from today?
So we would need to come back with an update, I believe, sometime in May of, before May of next year. Our plan is to work over the next six months to identify what we need to do and bring that in study sessions before we come here in May or June to adopt the second year of this budget.
Now, that was my second part of the questions. Our six-month update will probably be a study session rather than open.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who made the motion.
I did.
Oh, you did? And a second?
Excuse me, Mayor Moy. Is this for resolutions 2023, 149, 150, 151, 152, 153, and 154?
Yes, if we can do that all in one motion.
And Housing Authority?
Excuse me?
And the Housing Authority Resolution 2023-04?
Yes. All of them, can we do it in one motion?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. It passes?
Sorry, I didn't catch who made a first and a second.
Excuse me?
I didn't hear who made the first and the second. Oh.
Doug.
And the second?
The mayor made the first.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And now we're going to go ahead, and we're going to move things around because there are so many folks here for item 18. So, colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and move item 18 to the front right now, and then we'll go on to consent after that. So, Madam Clerk, this would be item 18.
Item 18? Okay, Markley Lane Extension to Peabody Road, and our presenter is Dave Feinstein, our interim Director of Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor Moy, members of the City Council. Yes, I am Dave Feinstein, the interim Community Development Director. And this next item was put on the agenda so that the City Council can discuss the topic of reconnecting Markley Lane to Peabody Road. As you may know, this item has been in the news lately, has been a topic of discussion at some other agencies. I know the Salona Transportation Authority has discussed it. I think it's been discussed with Travis School District, and so staff was asked to put this item on your agenda so that you could talk about this item as well. What we'll do, so that you have some good information to have this discussion, is we're going to give you a little look at both the past, the present, and the future of Markley Lane, to get you an understanding of what are our plans for reconnecting, and how did, looking back into the past, how did we get to where we are where Markley Lane is not connected to Peabody Road? So let's take a little jump in the time machine, go back to when Markley Lane was connected. And the best time, I think, to take a look at that is 2010, which was about the time when Markley Lane was really last fully functional as a connected road to Peabody Road. And to give you some context, we have Vanden High School here. Over on the left side, heading north-south, we have Peabody Road, and there's Markley Lane. Now, Markley Lane traditionally, historically, was essentially just a two-lane country road. It was built to county standards many decades ago, long before it was in the city. No curb, no gutter, no sidewalk, no real good ways for pedestrians or students to walk along that road. The portion along Vanden High School has been improved with some curb, gutter, and sidewalk. Vanden was brought into the city in two phases. The first phase along the high school was brought into the city in 1992, when the high school was annexed to the city. And then the remainder of Markley was brought into the city, actually, a little bit after this photograph was taken in 2013, as a part of some annexations with our train station specific plan. Now, as we know, it's not connected right now to Peabody Road, but at that time, it certainly was. But there was a major change about to happen with this area, all precipitated by the city's plans for a new train station. And so up here, this triangle, right here, as we all know, the city's constructed a train station at that location, at the corner of Peabody and Vanden Road. But the plans for the train station were really what brought about all the changes that we've seen since then to Markley Lane. And so if you look up there in that corner, that intersection, you can see that's the intersection of where Peabody, Cement Hill Road, and Vanden Road all come together. You can see in 2010, there had been some improvements, so those were fairly fully-completed roads. But as you look down to the bottom of that oval, you see the Peabody Road necks down, it gets narrower. And as a part of our train station planning, we, the city concluded that we were going to need to build an overcrossing. You couldn't just widen the road across, across the tracks to match the width of the road up there. We knew that Union Pacific would not allow us to do that, so we were going to have to build an overcrossing. Now, in order to get that overcrossing high enough to go over the train tracks, it was going to, as we came down on the south side, it was going to, the road wasn't going to be able to get all the way back down to grade level where Markley Lane was, but in fact, quite a bit farther to the south down there where it says "overcrossing foot," that's where we knew that the new overcrossing was going to come back down to grade level. So what we knew was that Markley Lane was going to be sitting well below the level of that overcrossing. At the same time, we knew that during construction of the train station, construction of that overcrossing, and then in the future, when Markley Lane was now down below the overcrossing, we knew that you're going to need to have some sort of a replacement, both essentially in that interim period between the time that Markley Road was disconnected and the time Markley Road was reconnected. There's one other access to the high school that's down farther to the south, the Dobie Lane. That's a signal-controlled intersection. Markley Lane really never had a signal. Actually, it doesn't, it doesn't now, and it didn't then. So the one signal-controlled intersection was farther to the south at Markley, I'm sorry, not at Markley, at Dobie. But as a part of looking at how do we provide some alternate access, the city started discussions around 2010 with the school district, and we knew we needed to find that alternate location for a road. And so quickly, the group focused on this just internal circulation road on the high school next to the football stadium, and ultimately concluded that that was the right location for an alternate access road. And so skip a couple of years forward, 2012, and you've got Viking Lane was constructed. All the traffic studies showed that Viking Lane, essentially, it fully replaced the service that Markley had. Essentially, instead of just connecting up there where Markley was, you just come around the corner, and you go up Viking Lane, and it serves essentially the same traffic functioning that Markley Lane did, with the improvement that Whitney Drive down here at the, whoops, down at the lower part, that's a signal. And so you've actually got safer conditions at that location to provide that access. So that's some of the past. Now, let's skip forward through the construction of the overcrossing. And so if you skip forward to 2017, you can see that overcrossing is completed. Now we're necked down narrowly over the tracks. Now we've got a wider road. It's still at its narrowest point there at the tracks, but now we have that intersection, or I'm sorry, that overcrossing fully constructed. So you've got the overcrossing, you've got the former Markley right-of-way, and it's now not connected at that location. We'll zoom in just a little bit into that square there, so the next slide is going to zoom in quite a bit more into that area. And now you can really see how Markley is not connected at that old intersection. Now, I talked about how the overcrossing was going to come down at a farther location, and you can see that a new intersection has been prepared at that location. It will have a traffic signal when that's fully reconnected, and it also is designed to provide access to the Clorox site across the street. So that's essentially where we are today. Now, if you're on the overcrossing somewhere about this point, looking down to the south, you can now see, here's Markley Lane sitting down below, you can see the new intersection down to the south. So what are our plans for the future? So the intent is that this open field here will be the location where Markley Lane would be constructed. And so a road would be constructed from the new intersection down here to where Viking Lane intersects with Markley Lane at this location. And so you'll eventually see cars driving out there. And from the air, here's what it would look like. So you'll see that road cutting essentially diagonally across this open field, and because it comes in at an angle into this intersection, the city's traffic engineer concluded that the best way to handle that would be a traffic circle, a roundabout, at that location. And tying in with some of the discussion that we've just had in the last discussion, here's new Markley Lane. We've talked a little bit about the south portal up at this location. So this is directly opposite the main entrance to the train station over on the north side. These are some stairs that go down. The south portal are also stairs that go down, but you can see that they go out into an open field, and we'll talk about that field in just a moment. But the plan for that south portal is that from the traffic circle, you'll have a new road with a drop-off lane here, and in conjunction with this road would be, separately, but following sort of along its path here, would be that safe route leading underneath the tracks here, where you don't actually have to cross a road, don't have to cross the tracks, you just go underneath, and then you would come down on that safe route to school, down, and then over towards the schools and towards Travis Air Force Base. So that's what the future will look like. So let's talk about how we get there. So again, the impetus for all this was construction of the train station. In conjunction with the train station, the city planned for all the land around the train station. And so we prepared what's called the Train Station Specific Plan. And so if you're familiar with the One Lake subdivision, that's one sub-area of the Train Station Specific Plan, what we call a planning area. The One Lake is Planning Area 4. Well, this area that you see here is Planning Area 3. And so again, you can see Vanden High School there, all of that area on the south side of the train station where Markley Lane previously existed is all within what's called Planning Area 3. Now, Viking Lane was designed to serve all the traffic that was, it was in existence when we built the overcrossing. But what we know is that when you plan and build out Planning Area 3, there won't be enough capacity for Viking Lane to sufficiently serve that. That's when you'll need to reconnect Markley Lane, or at least all the city's plans to this point have been, that what's driving that is actually the development of Planning Area 3. And you will have somewhere between 600 and 900 housing units within that area. So again, you know, a pretty significant amount of traffic coming from that. So Planning Area 3 has five property owners. You can see those property owners right there. And the plan is that whichever of those property owners goes first, they are the ones who have the responsibility to build this section of road right here. In 2016, the largest property owner here, the Green Property Owner, took the lead on preparing a master plan for Planning Area 3. And as a part of that master plan, there was an evaluation of all the infrastructure that would need to be constructed. And so not only would you have the Markley connection, you would have that drop-off, and you would have a whole bunch of other roads internally there to support that planning area. So as a part of the 2016 master plan that was prepared, there were cost estimates for all the various road and infrastructure pieces out there, and there was a, there was a set of, an ordering of which infrastructure has to go first. And so when all that was put together and the Planning Commission approved the master plan for this area, it was very clear that it didn't matter which of those five property owners built first, they all needed that connection. And so the requirement of the master plan is that whichever property owner goes first is the one that gets to build that piece of infrastructure. Again, the traffic was able, the current traffic was able to be handled by Viking Lane. Markley was needed for all the development, and so they have the responsibility to build it. So let's talk about how we get there. So if we just look at Markley Lane there, in order to build Markley Lane, first thing that whichever of those five property owners goes first, they will have to arrange for the right-of-way to be acquired for Markley, to be connected. So a portion of this yellow, and then for the traffic circle, those portions of each of those four other properties. So you actually need to work with all of those property owners to get some of that right-of-way. And then whoever... And then whoever builds that road also has to take a look at the environmental impacts of it, and what we know is that right immediately south of that intersection, you have, you have a preserved wetland, and you can see it pretty clearly in this aerial. Well, what we don't know exactly is how far up into this area does that wetland go? Potentially are there other wetlands in this area? So whoever builds that road connection would need to do a study of the wetlands. And then typically with wetlands, you have certain endangered species, so if there are any wetlands, we know we would have some endangered species that need permitting for. A five-acre field out in this area typically also is Swainson hawk habitat, so you'd have to get permits for impacts to Swainson hawk habitat. So whoever builds it has to obtain the right-of-way, do the environmental studies, and obtain any permitting for potential environmental impacts. So that is where we've been, where we are, and where we're going under the city's current plans for Markley Lane. Now, how is it going to get paid for? Again, the first developer has the responsibility to front all the, all the costs to build it, and so right now, there was a cost estimate that was prepared in 2016 for that road, upgraded to today with inflation factoring, it's somewhere between four and five million. What that figure though doesn't include is the cost for the, for any of the environmental permitting, which can be expensive. So, you know, it's probably over five million and could be as much as six million. We just, we don't know what that cost would be. But the first developer would need to front that money, and then each of those other four property owners, when they are ready to build, that 2016 master plan determined how much of that, cost of that road was the responsibility of each of the other property owners out there, they would be required to reimburse that first developer. And so the city wouldn't issue them any permits until we've seen evidence that they have reimbursed that first developer. So that is the story of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going with Markley Lane. Happy to take any questions and turn it over to the council for discussion. We also have Paul Koschel, our Public Works Director as well, for any questions.
Thank you, David. Questions here first, do you want to hear the speakers? Okay, then we'll go ahead, Madam Clerk, and take the public speakers on this.
Okay, our first speaker for item 18 is Maria Figueroa.
Hello again, everyone. I'm Maria Figueroa, I know some of you know me, some of you don't. I'm a resident here in Fairfield. I live in Goldridge, the neighborhood of Goldridge. Very active in my community, do a lot of volunteer work with the Adopt a Street program and National Night Out, things around my neighborhood. After living in Nevada for a few years, my family, you know, went on the hunt for a house and decided to move here to Fairfield in 2015. What landed us here in Fairfield was the community in Goldridge, and specifically Travis Unified School District. Fairfield was the closest to home that we could find, originally being from the Midwest. The city had like this old town charm that we really loved, that all Midwesterners, you know, look for in a home and in a community, but it also had this thing, it was like you guys were on the verge of this like great awakening, you know, like a modernization, you know, which meant that buying a home here, you know, was going to be a great investment. So we were like, yeah. The time we bought this house, you know, Peabody Road was closed off, you guys were doing the overpass, so for two years we had to go down Cement Hill Road, up Claybank, around Air Base, back to Dobie to get to Center Elementary School. That was okay, we all as a community patiently did that, but it got harder and it got harder, it got harder on the residents of Whitney Park, it got hard on the residents of Goldridge. We don't have bus routes that go down Peabody that hit our neighborhood to even put our kids on, you know, city transportation to get to Vanden, or if we trust our middle schoolers to throw them on the bus to get them down there, you know, we have to rely on the school transportation, which costs lots of money. Don't know if you could tell by the photos that they showed you, but Markley Lane actually extends past Vanden and up to Center Elementary School. It's the only access to Center Elementary School. I don't know if you guys even know that. There was a fire a couple of years ago that happened in that field adjacent to Markley Lane, right across from Vanden. If the fire people hadn't got there on time, if that fire had jumped the street, or if it had went up the hill to Center Elementary, you would have had 528 children trapped, and you guys couldn't have got them out because there's only one road. That's why we need safe school routes. Our children can't get to your Travis Safe School Route from Goldridge because we don't have sidewalks. There's no sidewalks in Cement Hill, there's no sidewalks on Peabody going down to the train station at Vanden. So when you talk about safe school routes, you have to put all these things into play, not just say this looks good, because it does look good and it's great and I love it, don't get me wrong, but it's, we don't need a bike path going from a train station where nobody lives and nobody can get to from our community to get to school. We need another alternative. We need to figure out how we can extend Markley Lane, move it around or something else, because we need these safe school routes for our kids. We've been waiting for this many years, we're wondering how many more years we have to wait. The way we're hearing it, because we don't get the same information as you guys all the time, we only get rumors and hypotheses on what's going to happen. We're under the impression that we have to wait for developers to come and pay for all this because you guys don't have the money to do so. But it's our responsibility as adults to make sure that our kids could get to school safe, and that's all we're really wanting and asking for. You haven't had a lot of people coming up here and complaining about this because we have that trust in you, so please just do that. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Alicia Minion.
Hi. So thank you for the presentation, and the message I'm getting from the presentation is that Fairfield is approving home developments, large ones, and so he mentioned 600 homes just behind the train station, we have one lake, I think that's going to be 2,200 homes. I read one environmental impact, it's like 6,800 homes. I live in Vacaville, my daughter attends Vanden, I'm in South Town Vacaville, we have built thousands, we're building thousands of homes. The feeder pattern is Vanden and Golden West, and it is exhausting getting my daughter to school. It is not a safe route. She is ready to get her driver's license, I don't even want her going to school. There's insufficient routes, it's dangerous. So let's go back in time, the Train Station Specific Plan. At that time, you guys did a rating, staff had intersections rated. Peabody and Markley Lane was rated F, and yes, it's just as bad as what you get in school. If you get an F in school, that's bad, that's the worst grade you can get. That is the worst rating for an intersection. So if you go back to the slide where there was no signal, based on your criteria, there should have been a signal in 2010, and there wasn't. The fact that you put one in now, it justifies why it is so awful in that intersection. You must build it, you have the obligation. I heard staff say the developers have the obligation. You do. You, that is what a city does, you're the service provider, you're the one that keeps us safe. You have the obligation. These developments were approved and the school was entirely ignored. The school was not part of the plan, only the developers were part of the plan. They get the discount on development impact fees. Those fees, those impact fees could have been used to build that road, and I hear a bit, like a cost of five million, is that because of the roundabout? I don't know. There's got to be some way, this road must go in, there is a way you can find the money. You could go to development impact fees, you can go to your, your capital improvement funds to see, maybe change your mind on one project, prioritize this one. I'm just asking prioritize the kids, do not prioritize the developers. They're fine. The developers are fine, the builders are fine. Their stock is at all-time highs, okay? They're all fine. I'm asking the city to please prioritize our, our children and, and the parents who have to drive.
Alicia, you have 20 seconds.
Okay, and then I'm going to email you the environmental impact report because they can be overwhelming, as you know, and it's very clear, the grade of F, it means operations with delays unacceptable to most drivers, occurring due to oversaturation, poor progression, and very long cycle lengths. It also states...
Your time is up, Alicia.
Sorry, okay, you get the message, thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Our next speaker is Matt Bedeau.
Hey, everybody, thank you for listening. Great presentation. I'm not going to try to go backwards, I want to go forward. So, so here it is, counsel. State of California changed, the times mandated when we can, when we start school. This is why since the pandemic, it's so crucial. This is what's happened this year. You know how Peabody boggles down there? I was campaigning before November and I was out there waving up, most of the traffic comes from Vacaville down Peabody, to your safety, it had to be. Okay, so it is very congested. Here's what's happening. Our school buses can't get to school on time, we'll see all the first, uh, very classes are late because it's just, it, it's a mess. Now let's talk safety, I give developers and money and all this, but let's talk safety for a minute. Pretend like you're, you're Google Maps and you're looking at that. In that area, you have two high schools, you have a middle school and you have an elementary school. There, that's the way in. That, that, that's, that's the, the only way in. That Viking Lane, 2012 might have done something, it doesn't do anything now. We have parents that have to drop off their kids an hour and a half early because they need to be sure the kids get in front of the school because in today's age, a lot of these parents in our communities, they both have to work to make ends meet. And I could go on and on and on and on. Last August, we had a back-to-school night, which all the schools do, okay? There was a bad accident on Peabody, so think about all the freshmen and sophomore, not too many juniors seem to come back to school, but all their parents and their little brothers and sisters were there and they were stuck in that area for hours, hours. What, what if we had an incident at the schools? God help me, don't. What if there was a fire where there's fires? God help there isn't. You, nobody in emergency services can tell me that you can adequately get in there and, and do your job because everything would be one big traffic jam. So here's the thing, city council, the city of Fairfield abandoned Markley Lane. All the politics and the money and everything floating around over all these years, that's all good. The city of Fairfield abandoned Markley Lane. City of Fairfield, please put it back because here's the thing, if we talk about...
You've got 10 seconds, Matt.
If, if, if we talk about, oh, we'll find this, we'll find that, who can secure this? Who can tell me so I can tell them that everything's okay and safe?
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Will Wade.
Thank you for your time, it was sincerely appreciated. My name is Will Wade, I'm a retired senior leader at Travis Air Force Base. I'm a father of three wonderful daughters who are alumni of Travis Unified School District. I'm a husband and a selfless special education teacher, and lastly, a Travis Unified School District trustee, responsible for the advocating for our district's adults in training, like we like to say in our district, our great teachers and our dedicated staff. I stand forth for you today to advocate for the safety, security, and last but not least, access for several Travis Unified School District facilities, to include, as alluded to, not only Vanden High School, but also Travis Education Center, Golden West Middle School, and Center Elementary School, that are all located off of Peabody Avenue, as you saw. Whereas the majority of our student population used to come from Travis Air Force Base historically, with the recent construction along Peabody, Vanden, and Leisure Town Roads, now approximately two-thirds of our student population reside within both Fairfield and Vacaville, no longer on base. All of those students access our two high schools, the middle school and one elementary school via Whitney Drive and Dobie Lane, as discussed. I acknowledge many competing fiscal priorities and difficult budget decisions. I acknowledge also that the tentative subdivision plan, resolution number 2021-10 is now expired and the map is no longer authorized and needs to be looked at. But finishing Markley Lane is a long overdue project that is important to Travis Unified School District, our students, our teachers, our staff, and the surrounding community. On behalf of all of our members of Travis Unified School District, to include the service members at Travis Air Force Base, who, who we serve, thank you for your consideration on this important topic, as we prioritize the project to finish and connect Markley Lane to Peabody again, in order to improve again our safety, security, and access. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Diana Gonzalez.
Yes, my name is Diana Gonzalez, and I have grandchildren that attend both Vanden, Golden West, and Center Elementary. I am very familiar with the drop-offs and pickups in the morning and the afternoon. And as you have heard from other speakers before me, this is a nightmare having to go through this. It is a very bad accident waiting to happen, be it from a vehicle or be it from a fire, and as you know, we are all very prone to fires here. So briefly, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has said, I'm going to challenge you to come during the school year for a drop-off and a pickup, to witness the congestion that occurs as everybody tries to get their children to school on time or to pick them up without having to go through massive congestion on those streets. Thank you.
Did anyone else want to speak on item 18? Sorry, I'm having an allergy attack. I don't have any hands raised online.
All right. It's back to us colleagues. Any questions of staff? Councilman Vacarol?
Yeah, I have a question. Well, first of all, I, you know, I, I'm a retired school teacher and administrator, and I actually do some work in various schools. I work mentoring teachers at administrative tutorial university, and so I've been to Center and I've been to Vanden, and I know how congested it is, so I, I hear what you're saying definitely. My question is, as far as the road, has anyone, have we talked to the county about the possibility of, you know, helping us out here, being at, you know, or even Vacaville maybe? I mean, I'm just saying, you know, we have students coming from Vacaville and coming from Fairfield, so to me, I mean, I would like to see if we were to move forward with this at some point, or whenever we're going to do it, to have a kind of a collaboration with Vacaville and the county and Fairfield, because there's a lot of Vacaville students that, you know, participate. I'm not saying I understand what you're saying about the responsibility, but I also realize that there are a lot of Vacaville citizens there also. So I don't know if that's even been brought up or, you know, because it would be really good if we could get a collaboration from all three, I think, because obviously things need to change, so.
Yeah, so councilman, I am working with the mayor of Vacaville and also with Supervisor Mashburn, and we're looking at different ways to fund, which, we've looked at all kinds of different things, including loans by this city in Vacaville, maybe that would be paid back later, that's something that would be a policy direction from this council would have to do that in their council. But yes, we, we are doing it, and we've had discussions at the STA, nothing's down in writing, obviously you would come to you first. Yeah. Yeah, Councilwoman Panduro.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question real quick, along those lines with regards to working with partners. I know that we meet quarterly with Travis Unified School District, and so at the, I know, I think you guys met with them recently, so I wanted to know if this was brought up and if there was any solutions or any type of discussion around this particular road that was talked about during that meeting, and if so, if you can share.
You want to speak to that, Madam Vice Mayor? Yeah, we did, we did talk about it at length, and it seems like... we're, we know that we have our students there. We know that this is within city. And so I agree that I believe that it is on us. But also, because there are students from Vacaville, we'd have to work that out. Our staff would have to work that out, see exactly how that breaks down. But the bottom line is, as you can tell, nobody has come forward from any of that, I think. Is that right? Mr. Feinstein has come forward to start the building process in that one planning area. And so that money, it could be forever. And so we can't wait for that. It's too dangerous. And, yeah, so we need to do something else.
Ma'am, one, one thing I might add to that in response to Councilwoman Panduro's question. And following on from that meeting and that conversation that we had with the, with the board members, we, we did, I did reach out to Superintendent Conklin to find out if there's been any conversations at the school district to modify the start times. Because as one of the trustees mentioned, a part of what's exacerbated the problem was a change in state law that lined up all of the start times. And so according to the superintendent, they are going to be staggering. So changing the start schedules for next year to spread that out, hopefully spread that traffic out a little bit. And then the other thing that we've looked into is modifying the signal timing from, from Dobie and Whitney to provide more time for exits out to help with that traffic flow. And I believe, I don't have the specifics. I'm sure our public works director could speak to that. But we do think we could modify that timing a little bit to assist with the traffic flow.
Councilwoman Vocara?
Yeah, a question on that, Mr. City Manager. So being at the time, I mean, I wasn't for the change trains, just to put it out there, okay, when they did it. But it's a state, how can they get around that? They, I'm just wondering.
I'm out of my element answering that. I just asked if they were considering any, any changes on the start times, and they said yes. They were, they were looking at some modifications.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. It, it matters when you're in the chamber. It really does. So it really helps us to focus and to get your perspective on being on the front lines out there. So I appreciate you taking your time. What's up in the back? How you doing? You want to speak? Okay, can, can I, can I finish first? And come on, come on up and fill out a speaker card? Yep. So yeah, so thank you. My question is this. So as it stands now, the developer, the first developer who begins developing in Plan in Area 3 is responsible, is on the hook contractually for funding the Markley Lane project? Is that correct?
Yeah. Ultimately, they're not responsible for the whole cost. They would get reimbursed by the other landowners. But the fronting of the money, yes, they would have that responsibility.
So, thank you, because that's a great lead into my actual question. So if the city or a collaboration of the city and other entities were to front this money to expedite this process so that we can, you know, actually have safe routes to school, because that's what we tout, right? So to actually do that, would, would the money that we invest be refunded by the developers whenever they begin to do what they're going to do out there in, in Area 3? In, in other words, we put up the money upfront, our collaboration, do we get refunded that money contractually?
Yeah, the way it's structured right now, no. But we could look into modifying the permits, the master plan permit to, to create that, to create that structure, yeah. Legally, I'm not quite sure how that, exactly that would be worked out, but it's something we could certainly look into.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that, you know, that staff comes back with some funding options, and that being one of them, you know, because, you know, in, in other words, the developer, this is a concern that needs to be addressed. And the developers, they have their concerns, like one of the speakers says, "The developers are fine." They're, they're, they're good, right? So, I mean, I think one of the creative things we can do is say, "Okay, developers, this is a pressing concern in the community, and if one child, if one person, if one incident happens and there is an, an accident or harm or injury, that's one instance too many." And we don't want to be, you know, privy to seeing something like that happen. It's, it, it needs, the time is of the essence. So I'd like to see us propose, you know, one of the funding options and to look back at the actual contractual obligations and to see if there's any mechanism that maybe we can use to say, "Look, either develop and get this road in, or we're going to put it in, and you're going to refund us the money that we put up." I think that's only fair, and I think it's rational. You know, I think it makes sense, particularly in light of the, the, where we are with this project now. So that would be my recommendation, that as, as you come back to the city council with prospective funding options, that that be one of them.
Yeah, absolutely. That's one of the things that we've been talking about, but that's great direction. Pardon me. Yes, Councilwoman Tonason.
So how far overdue is, is Markley Lane? Someone said it was overdue? The build out of it? One of the speakers? I mean, are we overdue on things out there?
Overdue? There, there was never any specific time requirement.
Yeah, that's...
Because the, I mean, the developers of those properties, as private property owners, can, you know, just determine when, when their development proceeds. There was a developer that was kind of the, the master developer that was organizing the property owners that, that seemed to be gaining traction, and they, they backed out from proceeding on that project in the last couple of months, partially, at least what they've told us, is because of the changing condition in the financing markets. And, and it just financially didn't make sense anymore for them to proceed with the development.
And so we are, I mean, I'm all for if we, if we can come up with the money somewhere for, to do this. It's not coming all out of our pockets. We don't, we don't, we're not in that position. But if we do something, maybe talking about it down the road, if we're going to put that project in at our expense, which, which ones are we going to take out? You know, would we have to eliminate fire stations or eliminate, you know, parks? I, I mean, if we have to do it ourselves, kind of being last, last resort there, because if we can get the funds, I mean, I, I would certainly be in favor of that. But when do we do that? How, I don't know what kind of conversation. Did you, did you and Pam put this on the agenda?
I did.
Okay. So I don't know what conversations you've had. Is Mitch, I mean, is the county, are they seriously interested in helping out?
Yes. And Mitch is, actually, he's been helping, it's, well, I can talk to you a little bit more about it, but been looking at different loan ideas, not from, you know, we're, we're still part of the rural counties, and they have very, very low interest that you can get through some of their sellers of loans. So then, do we split it up between the three? That's what I think staff needs to come back with, is how many students are ours? How many are Vacaville's? And then we can split it up that way. And then, and Travis, you know.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, like I said, you guys, I don't, I'm not privy to any of that information. You didn't discuss it with any of us, so, or you didn't discuss it with me. So yeah, if there's funds available and $6 million drops in our lap, I'm, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
So it's probably not a secret that I'm really sensitive to congestion. But I, I think I'm not clear. So the $6 million that's needed, that would come from, the developer would front it, right, with assessment fees? No? Okay.
No, that's, that's a, I forget if it's a collector or a local road. But it's, it's fully the responsibility of the developer to pay for the cost of installing that roadway. That is not a road that's included in our AB 1600 Development Impact Fee Nexus study, which is the study that looks at regional serving infrastructure, the impacts of new development on those roadways, and then allows us to assess a fee, a transportation impact fee, on the developers to pay for those portions of infrastructure identified in the Nexus study. So for example, improvements to Vandon Road, those, those are within the Development Impact Fee program. And therefore, we can assess those fees on each new unit of development and per square footage on commercial or industrial development to help pay for those regional serving infrastructure projects. This roadway is not included in our Development Impact Fee program, which we updated just last year and simply wasn't identified at that time as, as anything that was of a priority, nor do we necessarily, and we haven't looked at the legal aspects of it. But we're not sure, certain on the justification as a regional serving roadway. So for example, you have development in, in your district out on the west side of town. Those developers would pay development impact fees that then would pay for that infrastructure. And so there's a high likelihood that they could potentially challenge the inclusion of that roadway, saying there's no way their homes would ever have an impact on that roadway, and that, therein lies the nexus. So the $6 million at question is fully the developer's responsibility. They're responsible for building all of the local roads, and Markley Lane being one of those that serves their development as well as the existing neighborhood.
Is the question whether we could, we need to change that so that it is included? Or is the question that we would, I mean, do they want to take this on? I mean, or do we have to ask them to take this on? I guess that's why I'm a little stuck.
I, I think the question that the council's grappling with is, despite it being a policy of the council to make that roadway the responsibility of the developer to build, does the council want to change that opinion and instead make the city responsible for the cost of installing that roadway? And then being reimbursed if we can figure out a mechanism in order to put in place, being reimbursed for the cost of installation of the roadway? And I think realistically, we would have to be talking about some form of debt structure here because as I just showed you, or our finance director just showed, the, the city is not in a financial position to add $6 million. We're, we're very fortunate, and our public works department does a great job of going out and finding grant funds. Unfortunately, often the grant programs you're applying for money for don't perfectly align with the projects you have available. So for example, the Safe Routes to School grant, that was, that, that South Portal project was one that aligned with the Safe Routes to School program. Therefore, adding that project made sense because we could go grab $6 million. This roadway, we put in for an earmark with Congressman Guaramendi's office for $4 million so that we could attempt to accelerate this. And that was not something that, you know, the congressman supported in this, in this current fiscal, federal budget cycle. So there's possibility there's grants out there, but it's, it's not something that we've actively pursued on the basis that it's been the policy that that roadway would be the responsibility of the developer to build when they advance with their project.
If I can add a little bit to that, one of the discussions, potential funding sources that has been discussed at the Southern Transportation Authority is through the Regional Transportation Impact Fee. And so that, that fee is collected by the county and administered by the STA. And that's coordinated with the county. It's coordinated with Vacaville. So we, at a, a recent meeting of the Technical Advisory Committee, of which I'm a part of, we recommended that Markley Lane be included in their Nexus study for that RTIF program. They did include it in the RTIF Nexus study. It's underway right now. STA staff expects that the results of that study or that analysis to be back within the next few months. And then from there, it could potentially be added, excuse me, depending on what that shows and how it qualifies as, as a infrastructure, then that's potentially a way that we could partner and receive some funding. Right now, that, that RTIF program is funding a segment of Vandon Road that Vacaville's building. We're in line, Fairfield's in line for, for $5 million after Vacaville's portion. It's also another area of that RTIF program is funding part of our Complete Streets project. And so it is a, it's been a successful program, and it brings funding back to communities that are building homes.
So, Dave, you already said it. You don't know when this development's coming. It could be six months. It could be six years.
That's correct.
So what I would not be comfortable with is us making a six, taking a $6 million loan and have to wait until the builder builds to reimburse us. Does that make sense? Because if that's one of the options that we're looking at, to go and say, "We'll front it," and then when the builder comes in, they can reimburse us, that could be eight, 10, 12 years. I just, so back to my original statement is, yeah, if we can get help, yeah, I would be good with that.
Anybody else?
I do have two more speakers.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and take them.
Okay. Elijah Dillard, to be followed by Joe Gonzalez.
Hello. First off, I want to apologize for this spontaneous decision to come up here and speak, but I want to tell a story about this, this guy named Jordan I know at my school. I go to Vandon, and I feel like Markley Lane will definitely improve the flow of traffic in front of Vandon. But I want to tell a story about this guy named Jordan at my school. I see him walking on Markley Lane every time after time, after school. He walks, and he, he has to walk through that little shady area next, next to the bridge, the crossover. And I feel like Markley Lane will really help him. Like, yes, I heard you were talking about if it helps one person, it'll be really good. But it'll definitely help him because like, every time I see him walking on the bridge, he got a bunch of stickers on his sweatpants, on his shoes, and he just got to, he got to walk through there. I'm like, you, you know how shady it is down there? There's a bunch of stuff down there. It's like very bad to walk down there. I don't want him walking down there. I feel bad for him. I just feel like I had to tell this story.
Thank you for coming up and, and saying that.
Well done. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joe Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say. My name's Joe Gonzalez. I have three grandkids, one at Vandon, one at Golden West, and one at the elementary. My daughter-in-law has to take the youngest grandkid to school first. And then luckily, my grandson can drive. But my granddaughter, she's older than Golden West, but she has to go with my grandson because the mom and the dad are already at work. So that means she has to wait at least 45 minutes before her class starts. Is that right or wrong? But they still have to do it because the parents are, have gone to work. So that's a dangerous situation also. Now, this, this is falling on you guys right now. This should have fallen on the city council before you guys. And they did not, they did not put any pressure on those contractors to do their job. So now it's going to fall on you guys. If this is what you're facing, and these are the guys that left, they don't care no more. It's your job now. All right? Thank you.
It is our job.
And another card from Rich Burke.
Thank you. You heard my name, so I don't need to introduce myself. I do have grandkids that attend the middle school and high school. And my concern, and really, I wasn't going to do a presentation. I really only had, had a couple of questions. One of them, I think Mr. Tonason elicited, or even speculated on an answer that if, if you guys don't do anything, it could be 10... if you guys don't do anything, it could be 10 or 12 years before this issue is resolved, which to me is, is crazy, but apparently, it sounded like Mr. Tonnison was okay with that, as long, if we couldn't find money otherwise. So, the, the other question I had was, so there was a timing question, if we, if you did nothing, got an answer, sort of. The other question I had is, if, if you were to find some way to come up with funding and reimbursement, or no reimbursement, what's, what's the soonest that you could, you could imagine that there would be a roadway there that could be traveled and used? And I guess that's up to the planning.
Just let me make a comment really quick. If we could start tomorrow, I'd like to start tomorrow. But we don't, what I'm saying is, we don't have the money, and how far out could the builders be?
And I imagine it could be 10, 12 years. I think the mayor mentioned forever, so you don't, you just don't know what the, what the, if you're leaving up to someone else to solve the problem, which is, to me, that's a problem, if you're leaving it to someone else to solve it. So, back to the other question.
Yeah, so just as a preliminary estimate, at this early stage, assuming funding is identified, and let's say we started today on planning and design, based on some of the complications that Dave mentioned earlier with the wetlands and permitting, we would probably estimate between 18 and 24 months for planning, design, and permitting, and an additional, say, 18 months, 12 to 18 months for construction. So, we're, we're talking about three to four years, if we started now and everything went smoothly to having a completed roadway segment.
So, now I'm just wondering, is there some other out-of-the-box solution here? When you're talking four years, four years at the soonest?
I've seen.
So, thank you.
Yeah, sure, thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Because, well, you've already had your turn to speak, I'm sorry. And so, what I'm going to do is, is bring this back. All right, you can come up.
So, my name is Omar Flores. I have two daughters that are in school at Golden West and Vanden, and I have my son, who's at Cambridge. And so, thank you for the time. But basically, so what I'm hearing is like, this current practice was waiting on the developers. But I mean, I would like to implore you guys to find more solutions, you know, look into, you guys are talking about other agencies, other local areas, but what about like SB1 funding, you know, RMRA, Complete Streets Program? It sounds like there is funding. It might just be an issue of reprioritizing the, so that we can have safe access for our students.
Yeah, we, we need to look at every angle, everything, and we'll ask staff to do that, and thank you for that.
Okay.
Yeah. Could you fill out a card there for the clerk? You got it, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and just bring it back so we can give direction to staff. We have other issues as well. So, is there anything else from, from, anybody? Okay. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman.
So, is, is this shovel, considered shovel-ready? Okay.
No.
Okay.
It, it, as they said, it's going to be a little more difficult because of wetlands, maybe, that may be there, and, and some other things like that. So, yes, Councilwoman Panduro.
I had a question. So, with regards to the timing issue, that it would, if we started today, it would take, would, Paul said three, okay. Would the time lessen, go longer, if it was added to, let's say, our CIP list at, you know, during our retreat? Or would the, the time be the same, or what difference would that make?
So, that's the timing that I, assuming that we would take it on as a CIP, but as a couple of people mentioned earlier, it's not currently programmed in our CIP, and so, if the request was for us to look at potentially adding it to our CIP, then we would have to come back with options on reprioritizing the CIP, because our plate is full from both the resourcing, you know, staffing and funding standpoint. And so, if we add something to the CIP that's not currently on there, such as Markley Lane, something would likely have to fall off.
I understood that part, but I was, I think my question was more towards if we added it to our CIP when we meet, when we have a retreat. So, does that, is that a different CIP list, or is it anyone?
So, it wouldn't necessarily have to wait until, you know, next year to add it to our CIP. We could do it, you know, at your request, we could come back with options, and we could update our CIP outside of the normal, you know, cycle. Is that, yeah, so we could start at your direction, if we came back, if the request is to come back with options, funding strategies, then we could talk about how to incorporate into our CIP.
So, what I'll add to what Paul's saying there, and I appreciate the question, Councilwoman Panduro, is, you know, it's, a lot of it's about capacity, and there's only so much capacity we as an organization have to tackle projects. And as you've seen in the CIP and the budget document that you just adopted, we, we have a big plate of, of projects on the horizon, a lot of big projects. And so, I, I want to ask just kind of a clarifying question to your question. Are you saying that, you know, this is something that we could come back with options and then prioritize as a part of the mid-cycle update to the budget? Or is this something that council's looking for, no, no, sooner, much sooner than that, you want us to start looking at ways in order to reprioritize the CIP at this point in time, in order to do that ahead of that mid-cycle update process? That would be direction we would love to hear input on.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know that, I mean, it's urgent, but at the same time, I understand our challenges. And like Scott mentioned, you know, once, and like, you know, we only have one pie of money, and I know there's other ways to get money, and there's other grants and things. And I know we have to try to be innovative with how we collaborate, dig it out of somewhere else, it falls in our laps. I don't know whether we do it now, or we wait until we add it to our, during our retreat.
If, if, if you all don't mind, I have some ideas on this. Number one, we need to look at all options, and that means looking for grants, and, yeah, the other thing is that we want to find out how many children are Fairfield, which includes Travis, because Travis is part of Fairfield, and then how many are Vacaville or other. Also, do we have money in our revolving loan fund that we could use? If you could bring that back, how much we have in there? And then, also, if staff could talk with, I'll continue to talk with Mitch Mashburn, supervisor, and with the mayor of Vacaville, Mayor Carley, and once we have numbers, we can figure out how that would work. But you guys are the smarter ones, you're the ones with the calculators, and so, that's what I'm, I'm looking for, and I'm looking at it as something that's urgent. Now, this is not something that we planned, as you know, obviously. We sent you guys on it, you know, to look at other things, but this came up, and we have to be flexible. The other thing is, I think that we do with the CIP, we need to look to see what we could take off the table for you all and replace it with, with this, at least our part, because I don't think it's all ours. Those, those are, that's the direction I would give. Anything else to add?
Go ahead. Okay, so Mayor, you're saying like, just expedite, like, the conversations we're having with the county and Vacaville?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's going to be really critical.
Yes.
You know, we have to like, sooner than later, talk to them.
Yeah, yes.
You know, because, you know, we've all been involved in discussions with other agencies, and sometimes they go nowhere.
Right.
But, I mean, let's face it, they do. But I mean, I think in this case, you know, if we're going to do this, then we have to expedite it, and we have to talk to them about it, and like, you know, break, break down the cost then.
Yeah, exactly. And I can tell you that those two gentlemen, of whom I spoke, both have been with me pushing very hard at the STA. It's been the three of us, going, 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 saying, "Do we have money at the STA?" Tell them to find money. So, you know, they're in it with us, you know, they're just moving with us, so I'll, I'll talk to them about the breakdowns as soon as we can find out numbers, and let them know. Yeah, Councilman Tonnison?
Yeah, I'd be interested in exploring all the options that are available, and then bringing it back to us, but, you know, I'm still leaning towards something, towards our retreat. You know, if this is three to four years out, it gives us a few months to find, find money, and if we find money, then bring it back to us sooner, but if we, you know, you got, you got that money in your back pocket, David? So, that's, that's where I would go, is that it's absolutely a priority, but let's, let's have another meeting first to, you know, after we've had discussions with, be it the Board of Supervisors, be it the Vacaville, be it, because I don't, I don't know how many Vacaville students and Fairfield students like you.
So...
It sounds like we definitely need more information.
Well, absolutely. So, that's what I've asked, and I'm hoping that comes back to us way before we have another retreat. I mean, we need to have those numbers as soon as we can get them, and then we can decide then whether this is something that we can get done now, as soon as we have the other two on board as well. All right. Is that clear enough?
Yeah, so what we'll do is, we'll look at options, and we'll return with a list of projects that you could cut, and instead, reprioritize this as one of the top priorities for the CIP. I think that's what I'm hearing from a direction.
And also, there'll be some other discussions.
Yeah, yeah, other discussions on funding.
With county and other cities.
Correct, but, but even the work, just getting to that point, our, the plate is full. So, the work in looking for grants, the work in starting to prepare this as a project, that, we can't just add something more.
That's right.
So, very quickly, we will identify options for what projects, or project this council wants to cut from your CIP in order to free up the staffing capacity, in order for us to reprioritize this, as something that we're exploring all these funding options for.
Right.
Looking at the permitting process and all of that.
Very good, thank you. Oh, yes, Vice Mayor?
So, can we, can we say that we'll be ready to have that conversation in terms of prioritization within the next month?
I think that's fair, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, by, by the 18th of July, we can, we can bring this back.
We'll put it back on July 18th. So, we can see all of our friends back here on July 18th, because we'll have that on the agenda. Thank you all. I'm going to go ahead and take a pause until nine o'clock, so we can use the restroom, we've been going about three hours now.
Before, before you go, let me just thank all of the students.
Yes, thank you.
Who came out to support this effort tonight on a school night, well, actually, y'all for summer, right? But even on a summer night. I mean, thank you for coming out and being present in the chamber. It matters, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, how are you? How are you?
And, uh, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, we're gonna go back to the consent calendar.
Consent calendar, okay. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
All right.
And I remember, um, Councilmember Williams asked if we could pull item six?
And I would like to pull sixteen.
Okay.
So we'll start with six.
Okay, let me read, um, item six. Resolution 2023-155 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield authorizing execution of the improvement agreement between the City of Fairfield and Albert D. Sino Construction Company for the Red Top Road widening improvements. And, um, who would, that will be Paul Koschel, our Director of Public Works.
Hi there. I don't have a presentation, but I can try to answer any questions you may have, Councilmember.
Thank you. It'll be brief, um, I promise. Uh, so extremely excited about this, um, but, uh, I drive this road every day, a few times a day, and my question, uh, twofold, is, um, December 31st seems to be right around the corner. Um, in your, um, uh, experience, is, is this December 31st, uh, 2023 timeline reasonable?
Yeah, it's definitely an aggressive schedule. Uh, we did get a preliminary schedule from, uh, the developer and the developer's contractor. Uh, they're anxious to get started, pending approval of this item tonight. Um, a rep from the developers here tonight with us at the back of the, back of the room there, um, showing his support of the item. Uh, we heard from him earlier this evening that they intend to, or they hope to start in mid-July. Um, and part of the reasoning is they want to get as much work as they can during the summer, uh, school break. Uh, they're not going to finish, uh, before school goes back in, but the more they can do, the better. Uh, as part of the, uh, work, our staff is going to be working with the developer and their contractor and coordinating with our mod team to get the word out, uh, so that impacted residents of the area know what to expect when construction's starting, updates along the way. Um, so that is part of the plan. Um, a week or two before the work actually starts, we'll get out, uh, the tangible message boards, um, so people know, uh, in advance, like, if they're not paying attention to social media or otherwise, they'll see the, you know, as they're driving every day, pass it, they'll see, um, you know, those message boards alerting of, of upcoming construction. So, uh, the, the preliminary schedule does show them completing, uh, prior to the end of the year. Um, as we get closer to the end of the year, then there's a couple of things that, you know, weather, weather starts to become a factor, um, especially when you have paving operations, so there's a caveat there that it's kind of pending weather. Um, if they get done, you know, earlier in the season, October, November, then it's more favorable, the further you go, um, it becomes a little bit more challenging. So, short answer is yes, the, I mean, they're anxious to get started and their, the developer and their team are confident they can complete by December 31st.
Thank you, and you answered my second group of questions about outreach, and then my final question is about, um, will the impact be that that road closes while it's in, in, uh, in, in disrepair and it's being routed other places?
So, uh, we don't have the details yet on the complete phasing of how they're going to do construction. Uh, my general understanding is that they're going to build, um, to the south, yeah, to the south, um, uh, the two new lanes. Once that's done, they can, uh, likely, they'll move traffic over to those new lanes and do any of the rehab work necessary on the existing lanes. So, I, we don't anticipate a full closure of Red Top for that segment, but they'll do it in phases and move traffic, uh, as needed.
I have a question there.
Yes.
Yes. So, um, how is that going to affect the traffic at Rodriguez High School?
Yeah, so, um, that's one of the things that's going to be important, um, to us, I think, and I'll look to Ryan to kind of give me a head nod, I think we're going to restrict, uh, construction when school starts, um, outside of the morning and afternoon commute time, so it'll be like from nine to two, is that right, Ryan? Yeah, so that, that's going to, to minimize impacts of construction activities, that, that'll be, um, our plan.
Okay, yeah, that was my concern, just, you know, from, because I, I know the traffic up there by the school gets pretty crazy.
Understood.
And, um, yeah, and, um, okay.
Any other questions? Alrighty, are, is there any speakers on this?
Uh, no.
Alrighty, um, then I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
For item six?
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, um.
And you wanted me to pull item sixteen?
Yes, item sixteen, please.
Okay. Resolution 2023-166 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield authorizing the city manager to execute and extend the terms of two current memorandums of understanding between the City of Fairfield and Shelter Solano, Inc., for the provision of emergency shelter beds. And our presenter is, um, Assistant to the City Manager, sorry, Anna Giles, and, um, Analyst April Cobb, sorry, it's, it's a late night.
Uh, good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Good night.
Anna Giles, Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm joined by April Cobb, our newest Management Analyst, who, um, prepared tonight's report for you, as well as Delaney Lyden, who is our Admin Assistant in Homeless Services Division, um, and oversees much of the day-to-day operations, um, as well with our service providers. And we're here to answer any questions you might have about this item.
Okay, so I, I pulled this, um, because I, uh, want to say a little something, and that is how much I appreciate, um, our two council members who are working on the two-by-two committee and getting things done. Um, I know that things aren't moving as quickly as you probably would like to see. Um, I continue to have serious questions about Shelter Solano, um, and I don't see a really good, um, return on investment for our taxpayers, and I just have a lot of questions, so I'm going to have to vote no on this tonight, knowing that, you know, we do need the beds, but I can't see throwing good money after bad. And so, um, I know there've been some deaths inside there, there've been some other, uh, unaccountability, uh, they've never answered, um, about the grand jury report, um, and there has been no audit, uh, forensic audit. And so, um, for that reason, I'm going to have to vote no tonight, and I don't expect anybody else to do that as well, but anybody who wants to comment, um, in, uh, yeah, Councilman Vaccaro.
Yeah, well, thank you, and I appreciate your honesty about it. Um, and I, you know, having worked with Councilwoman Pandora on the two-by-two for almost two years now, um, yeah, you're right, I mean, you always want things to move faster, I get that, and we really do. Um, but I know there's a need there for the beds, there really is, um, and that's, I'm very sensitive to that. I mean, the shelter is important now, if it, if we do down the road realize, uh, maybe we can do a lot better, or maybe sooner than later, then that's something we'll discuss, you know? But for now, I have to vote yes on that, because I know there's a real need for these beds, so that's the only comment I wanted to say.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Pandora, just one second, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just add to that. I think we all know and can see and agree that, you know, those beds are needed, number one. Number two, um, is there challenges with Shelter, Inc.? Are they perfect? Absolutely not. And I think one of the things that we're doing with Capsolano is trying to figure out new ways or just be innovative with the funding. We all understand the funding's not working correctly, and it could be done a lot differently and better and more efficiently. And so I, that, I mean, and so in, in, in with Capsolano, it's taken us time to get to where we're at, and we still have work to do, especially with building the foundation to be able to have admin and paid staff so that we can get more things done.
Right.
And I think, once we have that established, we can then look at the more, get, go more deeper in the weeds to see how is accounting, we can work together, so that we, when we have, um, organizations such as this, that, you know, um, that are a resource for the entire, for, for Fairfield, um, but then also for others, like Susun, because I know Susun has beds in there, and so does Vacaville. Um, so we can find a way to be more efficient with our money, be more efficient with the way we run the homeless services programs, but again, it takes time, like Rick said, and I know we will get there, I'm confident in that, I'm confident in my colleagues that sit at the, at that table, because I think they all see the need, um, to be able to kind of pull apart the way things have been getting done, and find ways to kind of, to restructure it so that we can all move forward together.
Yeah, that, that makes total sense, and I appreciate, um, both what you and, um, Councilman Vaccaro have done, and I, I do track it, and I do know that you guys, um, first of all, you guys are far ahead of others when it comes to understanding policy, because this city's far ahead. I, I think you guys can tell, um, more far ahead than any other city. Um, we have good staff, and, um, I know our city manager and I talk about this a lot, so I appreciate that, and I am patient with that, I just, um, I just can't do that today. Councilman Tonison?
Uh, no, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
The city attorney, is that something we're going to need to make a motion on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, uh, I was out at the shelter last week, I went ahead and went through the kitchen and was looking at the grounds, and just from my first tour, when I went with, uh, um, our city manager, um, there's been a lot of improvements. Also, we have Kaiser Permanente has beds out there, we got the, um, beds from the county, um, Fairfield's got beds, Rio Vista's got beds, so there's a lot of, lot of investment already in there, and, and the investment is ours. So if we don't like the management of our investments, we can change that. Um, but as far as the investments we made, I think we need to, I'm going to agree with, um, um, Councilman Vaccaro, and I think we do need to pay attention to our investments and what, what's already been built, complete that, and then we can reevaluate whether we like the way that it's being managed or not, but the, the funding and, and the building and the, and it's there, and we have quite an investment in it at this time, so I'm going to also vote yes on that.
Very good. Um, Madam Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. My question is, is Shelter, is Shelter, Inc. underperforming? Are they underperforming in terms of bed capacity and utility for the community? In, in, in other words, let me rephrase, are they at maximum bed capacity right now?
The, the simple answer to that is no, um, but that's because they have to get to completion of the kitchen in order to be at full capacity for the property.
Okay, so, and, and, and my next question is, how much longer, we've been talking about this kitchen, it seems like, for a really long time.
It's due to open next month, middle of next month.
Yeah, and, and therein lies some of the concerns that I think some of your colleagues are pointing out. Um, so just this, last week, I think, Anna, um, we received what we've been requesting for, uh, a few months now, uh, which is the backup documentation on the expenditures side for, for the entire kitchen project. Um, so we, I mean, just, just literally this morning in my inbox, uh, we received it last week on a thumb drive and, and Anna put it onto our server, so we're, we're going to start digging through that, uh, because obviously the, the city has obligated funds for that project, uh, but it's not something we've paid yet, and so before we were going to, you know, authorize any release of funds for that project, we wanted to see the accounting on the, on the construction of the project.
So by voting yes on this tonight, are we putting the cart before the horse? I mean, are we, are we, or am I missing something?
Um, I, I don't think you're missing anything, but I don't, also don't think we're putting the cart before the horse.
So are we approving this tonight, which means this funding is going to be allocated before we have a review of the documentation that we wanted to take a look at?
Yes.
That you have in your inbox, that you haven't had a chance to look at, because you just got it?
Yes, but for totally different things. This is for access-
Can you help me explain, understand that?
Yeah, this, these two MOUs are for access to 25 beds that our, uh, homeless intervention team uses in order to refer homeless individuals into services. Without, without these two MOUs, we don't have those 25 beds available for us to refer individuals off the streets and into, into services.
And these are existing beds that are currently available?
These are beds that currently exist, that we currently contract for access to. The kitchen, separate and apart, is a capital improvement project that will expand their ability to, uh, add additional bed at the property, that right now, they, they don't, they don't have a commercial kitchen. The, the new dining hall and kitchen provides them that, that commercial kitchen to where they can get to full capacity at the property.
And that's the documentation you just got that you need to review?
Correct, so, you know, look at it as this is operations, that's a capital project.
If I, I'm just going to add, but it's all the same management, so, um, that, those are where my questions continue to be, but I'm going to go ahead and take a motion, um, and I believe, excuse me, Madam Mayor? Yes.
Did you open it up for a public comment?
Oh, any public comment?
Um, I don't have any speaker cards, and there are no hands raised online.
All right, yes, Councilwoman Williams?
I am going to vote yes, but I remain, um, concerned about Shelter, Inc., and I want us to keep our eyes on them.
I think we do need to look a lot deeper. I agree with you. Yes, Councilman Vaccaro?
Before we make a motion, make a motion, um, I do want to say, I, I agree with you, Councilwoman, 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 sorry, it's late.
It is late, sorry, everybody, sorry.
But it is kind of late, but, um, you know, I think everybody here has expressed, yeah, we all have concerns, it's obvious, but like Councilwoman Pandora said, one thing we're really trying to do, you know, at the, at our group level at Capsolano, is trying to get away from the whole bed, you know, pay for beds-
Right.
And make, make it that regional, you know, that, that regional outlook that we've been talking about for the last two years. So, you know, get away from that, pay for beds, and hey, that facility is going to be used the right way. So, yeah, I have my concerns, but I also know we need beds, so I'm going to make a motion to pass.
Okay, there's a motion and a second?
Second.
Second, from Scott Tonison, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm opposed.
Okay.
All right, that passes six to one, and then we're going to go ahead, and believe it or not, we're going to move on past this.
I think we still need-
We're going to go ahead and vote on the consent calendar.
The regular consent, okay.
Um, I'll entertain a motion for that. Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alrighty then. All right, so we're going to move on to, where are we now? Oh, public hearings, right? Oh, no, we have item nineteen.
Item nineteen, okay.
All right, thank you.
Resolution 2023-168 through 2023-176 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, granting preliminary approval of fiscal year 2023 to 2024 engineers' reports declaring intention to order the levy and collection of assessments, and providing notice of a public hearing for landscaping and lighting maintenance districts number one, Gateway, number three, Waterman Highlands, number five, Smith Ranch, number six, Pepper Tree, number seven, Rolling Hills, number eight, Colob Estates, number eleven, Paradise Valley North, number twelve, Downtown Business District, and number thirteen, North Cordelia. And our presenter is Chris Lewis, Senior Management Analyst in Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're initiating the fiscal year 2324 annual proceedings to levy assessments in the nine LLMDs that recently underwent a proposition to 18 ballot proceedings just weeks, just weeks ago. The June 7th ballot tabulation showed no majority protest in the Gateway and Paradise Valley, um, areas, and the council approved the formation of the new LLMDs in that area. So for fiscal year 2324, assessments will be levied in accordance with the engineer's reports that was adopted, uh, that were adopted on June 7th, and all landscaping and lighting services will be provided, um, under those new districts in those communities effective July 1. However, the two existing districts in those areas did receive a general fund loan back in 2022 to support services through the end of this fiscal year. Um, each loan was issued at zero percent interest, uh, but the loan, the five-year repayment term is supposed to commence in fiscal year 2324, so the proposed 2324 annual proceedings in, in front of you for the existing Gateway and Paradise Valley districts, um, includes a reduced levy, a reduced assessment amount, and a reduced budget that will cover only the amount needed, uh, to make those annual loan repayments, and to pay any applicable county fees, um, as outlined there in the staff report. Also, on June 7th, the ballot tabulation results show that there was a majority protest in the remaining seven LLMDs that recently underwent that Prop. 218 vote, those districts being Waterman, Smith Ranch, or Rancho Solano, as it's commonly referred to, Pepper Tree, Rolling Hills, Colob, Downtown, and North Cordelia. So in accordance with Section 22593 of the Streets and Highways Code, council abandoned proceedings, or formation proceedings for those districts. So all, um, landscaping and lighting maintenance services in those districts will continue to be, in those communities, will continue to be provided in the existing LLMDs, um, that exist already. Five of those remaining seven districts, um, Waterman, Pepper Tree, Rolling Hills, Downtown, and North Cordelia, also received a general fund loan in 2022 with the same terms previously mentioned. So the proposed fiscal year 22, uh, 2324 annual proceedings for the remaining seven districts includes assessments levied at maximum rates, uh, for each district. Um, it also includes a budget for landscaping and lighting maintenance services and the annual loan repayments, uh, where applicable. Staff is currently working with landscape service providers to revise the current contracts with scope of works more appropriate for the amount of revenue each district is projected to receive in the coming year, and we should have more details on that in July. So the first step is to, um, in these annual proceedings, is to adopt the resolutions before you to grant preliminary approval of the engineer's reports, declare intention to order the, uh, to, um, order the, and collect the annual levy, and set the public hearing date for July 18th. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this item?
No, I do not.
Okay, any questions here? Some, ding ding, okay, ready to go.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. All right, now we're going to go on to public hearings.
Item 20, public hearing and resolution 2023-177 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 supplement to the engineer's report confirming the boundaries and assessment, and ordering the levy and collection of assessments for the Smith Ranch Assessment District. And again, our presenter is Chris Lewis.
Thank you. Um, as mentioned, for your consideration tonight is the resolution approving the 2324 assessments for Smith Ranch Assessment District. Uh, this district was established in 1986 to fund capital maintenance and improvement projects, uh, for street, storm drains, and other infrastructure in the Rancho Solano community. The fiscal year 2324 assessments are proposed at $325 per parcel, which is below the max rate for the district of $395 per parcel. So on May 16th, council initiated the, um, annual proceedings for this district with the adoption of Resolution 2023-123, and by conducting the public hearing tonight, adopting the resolutions, and, uh-
Sorry, excuse me.
Hold on.
I think we need a recusal.
I have to recu-
Oh, sorry.
Do I, do I have to repeat that, everything? Okay.
Happy birthday, Rick.
By conducting the public hearing and adopting the res-
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Oh, good.
He's trying to escape.
He was, so we can sing to him.
Okay, so by conducting the public hearing and adopting the proposed resolution, council will complete the approval, approval process for the annual levy and collection of the 2324 assessments for the Smith Ranch Maintenance District. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers?
No, I do not.
Anybody online? Nope, okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Real, real quick, just, uh, for point of clarification, uh, Councilmember Vaccaro recused himself because he lives in this district, and therefore cannot vote on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moved west, got a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it was unanimous, 6-0. Item 21, please.
Item 21, public hearing and resolutions 2023-178 through 2023-184 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 engineers' reports, confirming the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 diagrams and assessments, and ordering the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 improvements for landscaping and lighting maintenance districts number 10, Southbrook, number 14, Woodlake, number 15, Goldridge, number 16, Creekside at, at Cordelia, number 17, Chadbourne, Beck, Cordelia, number 18, Goldridge Park, and number 19, Corporate Commons. And again, our presenter is Chris Lewis.
Thank you. On May 2nd, council initiated proceedings, um, to approve the annual fiscal year 2324 assessments in the districts, uh, the city clerk mentioned in the resolution title. Aside from rate increases in several of these districts as outlined in the staff report, and those increases being an increase over the fiscal year 2223 levy, but still below the maximum rates adopted for each district, um, aside from those, there are no significant changes from fiscal year 2223 to report on for these districts. The final step in the process is to hold a public hearing and adopt the resolutions before you, which will grant final approval of the 2324 engineer's reports, um, assessments and budgets for each district. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
No request to speak, and no hands on. In fact, no one's online.
No one's online. Where'd everybody go? Gosh darn it, close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Second with Tonison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous, and so, um, uh, we, if we, we don't have any other business, except for, I'm going to adjourn this meeting in honor of Amber Villarreal. It was a City of Fairfield employee, she passed away recently, as you all know, and she had a very nice service that some of us attended, and many of our employees also attended, so, um, we close in her honor tonight, and the next city council meeting is on July 18th.
I have one item.
Okay.
Happy birthday, Rick.
Oh, oh, wait, let's sing it.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Rick. Woo-hoo. Happy birthday to you, and many more.
He did it.
Sorry, Rick. I think, I think he-